And planning board. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And to begin, I'd like to go around and introduce ourselves if we can. Maggie?
Maggie Oldfield, member.
Sean?
Sean Fahey, member.
Rich?
Rich Beeler, member.
And our staff. Tim?
Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Josh?
Josh Lee, Assistant Town Planner.
And I'm not sure if Julie's with us, but and myself, Meredith Hall, Chair of the Planning Board. Welcome, everybody. We can begin first with our administrative items. The next meeting we have scheduled, we actually, it says August 25th on the agenda, but scheduled for Wednesday, August 24th is actually the date that we had chosen to have Dotson and Flinker come and finalize our draft of the design guidelines. Tim, do you have further information on this, on whether we're gonna continue with that date with Dotson and Flinker?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And then I guess, you know, pending other business, we can either, that will be the only item on the agenda is discussion of those guidelines on the 24th. So I'll open it to the board on whether we think that we may need after tonight, if we need a meeting on the 25th to discuss other business as well. Tim, I don't know if you have thoughts on that, but you can give that with your staff update. And then we have another meeting scheduled for September 8th, so just to mark our calendars on that. Next, Cheryl's gonna be running a little bit late tonight, so we can go ahead. If I don't know if members have had a chance to take a look, there were two sets of minutes that were sent out, that being Thursday, July 14th, and also July, the meeting for Walcott Woods, Friday, July 22nd. Have members had a chance to look at those? Cheryl had some edits on those.
Yes, all good.
I have not. I've been on vacation.
Good for you, Rich. Good. Okay.
Meredith, I did. I'm fine with the minutes.
Okay. All right. So we do have, we have enough to vote on these. Unless, Rich, would you like for us to hold off and wait?
Yeah, I'd like to see them.
Okay. You know what? Let's hold off on voting on these then, and let Rich have a chance to review them as well. So, not a problem. So we will defer these to our, it'll either be the meeting on the 25th or September 8th. So terrific. So we can move on to Tim with your staff update for us.
Thank you, Meredith. Just as it relates to scheduling, you know, I think we should see how the agenda goes tonight. The only thing that I am anticipating is we may be getting an R application soon. I don't know exactly, but probably sometime next week. You know, if that's, that's the only thing, you know, potentially be on the agenda, you know, it's not, I don't think it would be a big deal to just wait until September on that. But I'll, I'll check the statute on when you need to track on those applications from there. It's an A and R for 34 Milton Hill Road, literally, literally just got recorded today and they couldn't wait to do an A and R. But I'll let them explain that when it comes in. Shouldn't be a huge deal. Sorry, was Shaw, you didn't say something?
No, no.
Sorry. I got, I got my little guy over here, so it's, it's who's who. So just a couple of quick things. One, I don't know if folks watched the Select Board meeting yesterday, but I believe that we've set a date for a Fall Town Meeting for December 5th. So that would be when we do our, our Fall Special Town Meeting. I don't think that they've set a date for the opening and closing of the warrant, but we'll, we'll keep you posted on that, you know. There are a couple of things that I know are gonna be relevant to the Planning Board. We've talked in previous staff updates about the zoning recodification efforts. Oh, there was one more. Oh, there's something that I worked on relative to one of the 40B projects. But there, you know, there are articles that have been kind of percolating. So once we have a date for the opening of the warrant, we can talk in a little bit more detail about any, any articles that the Planning Board has got one to put together. But that's something that I think we should be cognizant of. The only other thing is, and I sent this around yesterday, DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, promulgated yesterday final guidelines for the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning Law. These final guidelines are kind of updates on the draft guidelines that came out in December of last year, incorporating a lot of feedback that came in from, from other, from other communities. We also submitted a comment letter. Somebody, Maggie, I think you might have something going on in the background. I don't know. I'm hearing. All right, let's see if that helps. Sorry, I, I'm just, I was, I was hearing something. I wasn't sure if I was getting cut off or whatever. Sorry about that. I've given, I've given the final guidelines a first look, and you all might have had a chance to read them as well. So there may be some, some further update in a future, on a future agenda, in a future staff update. But based on my read, I don't think there are a ton of relevant updates to the town of Milton's situation. The biggest change between the draft guidelines and the final guidelines was the elimination of the sort of bus community category. You might recall that there were sort of tranches of levels of service for MBTA service that towns were classified by rapid transit, which is subway, red line, green line, blue line, orange line. The next one was bus service. That's, you know, any town that has MBTA buses going through. And then it's commuter rail. And then the final level of service was towns that are adjacent to towns that have MBTA service. The final guidelines eliminate that bus category. And that doesn't, it's not relevant to Milton because we're still classified as a rapid transit community. But what it did mean is certain other communities, Arlington, Wellesley, Western are examples, where sort of their commuter rail service, but also they had bus service. The bus service kind of put them into a higher tranche, and now they're in a lower tranche of obligation under that legislation. So the other things that are additional, but don't really affect the bottom line is there's clarity in the final guidelines about mixed-use development, basically acknowledging that your compliant districts can be a mixed-use district, but it can't be exclusively mixed-use, meaning that you can't draw up a district that says no residential-only buildings, you can only have mixed-use. So that's just a little bit of clarity. And then the other bit of clarity that's important is really related to affordability requirements. A lot of communities, I think, including us, had some comments and questions about, you know, what is, what is the role of inclusionary zoning, affordable housing in this legislation? And so there's no requirement for there to be affordable housing. This is not an affordable housing law. It's a zoning law that's meant to sort of increase the zone capacity for multifamily development. But the guidelines do acknowledge that a lot of towns are interested in affordable housing, and they want to be able to include inclusionary component. What the final guidelines say is that you can have an inclusionary component to your compliant zoning district, but that it can't be more than 10% of all units. And the affordability levels can't be below 80% of area meeting income, which is the 40B levels. And then the final thing is, is any units have to be countable on the subsidized housing inventory. You know, the reason for this is, you know, sometimes you'll see, you know, inclusionary zoning used as an effort to sort of stymie development, you know, when you put a 33% affordability requirement on, on a multifamily building. Very difficult to achieve that without subsidy. And so the effect is that nothing gets built up of that zoning. So Commonwealth is trying to strike a balance between, okay, towns are interested in adding affordable housing and keeping pace with their 40B ratios. We also don't want to see inclusionary zoning used as a means of, you know, making zoning unbuildable. Other than that, everything still stands. 15 units per acre, that's in the legislation. The zone capacity that we're responsible for is 25% of our year-round housing unit count, which is something like 2,461 units. And, you know, the timelines that they've established are sort of the next step in this process is they've provided this action plan template, which is partially a kind of a request for information just about our current zoning and our efforts around housing production. And then a sort of a really kind of rudimentary timeline for how we plan on implementing a compliant district. And so they want to know, Mama just came home in the car. Sorry about that. They want to know, you know, when we're gonna be doing community outreach, when we plan on, you know, having a public hearing at the Planning Board, when we plan to go to town meeting, so laying out that sort of timeline. And then, so that's due January 31st, 2023. And then in order to be compliant in the next year, you have to have a compliant district approved by DHCD by December 31st, 2023. So that's the new guidelines. There's not, there's, they're short enough that I think you can read them in detail and kind of understand them. I'm gonna give them a little bit of a closer look. I'm gonna look at some of the analysis and commentary that's coming out and see if it's, it's relevant to have, you know, an additional kind of more detailed debrief. One thing that I will say is that, and I know this is, this is on an agenda item, you know, further down the agenda. I think this may be something worth discussing in a joint session with the Select Board, how the town wants to approach this legislation, whether the Planning Board wants to lead, whether we want the department to lead, whether the Select Board wants to lead, just so that, you know, we all have a clear understanding of what direction we're going. So that's all I've got for now, Josh. I don't know if you've got anything. I was on vacation last week, so hopefully nothing momentous happened, but if it did, Josh's hand was on the steering wheel, so.
And I can.
Go ahead, Josh, you first. No, go first, Josh.
That, that is the major update. Everything else should be relevant to specific agenda items. So, so all good since Tim's departure.
Tim, is it okay if I ask a couple of questions on, on that particular topic? I haven't had a chance to read it. Is there a contiguous acreage that's required?
So it doesn't necessarily have to be contiguous acreage. This, this is one of the other things that changes for other communities, but doesn't change for Milton. 50% of any, so when they say a zoning district, it could be a patchwork district, as long as it all adds up to at least 50 acres. And it could be different sub-districts. It could be, there's a lot of different options. But the one, the one requirement is that at least half of that district has to be within the half-mile catchment area of a transit station. So we've got flexibility for half of the area that we're gonna be responsible for, but at least half of it has to be in that catchment area around Milton Station, Central Ave, Valley Road, or Cape Town Street.
So 25 acres have to be within a half mile?
At least, yes.
But the 25 acres does not have to be contiguous?
That's my understanding, but I can get certainty on that. But everything I've heard and read leads me to believe that it doesn't necessarily have to be contiguous. But, because the other, the other, the other requirement is that you can't have a sub-district that's smaller than five acres. So, you know, they want you to sort of have decent-sized districts, but I think there's flexibility in kind of how many sub-districts they are and what their location is.
Okay. And, Tim, is it a fulfill it to its set expectations? Or is it an all or nothing model? You have to have 50 acres and you have to have, I think you said, 2,400 units based on our, the size of our town? And if you don't, if you don't achieve that, what is the result?
Yeah, so, so those are, those are the thresholds. I mean, the whole, the whole district has to be, has to total 15 units per acre. So you could conceivably have part of a sub-district that is 10 units per acre, for instance. But that means you would have to balance the scale somewhere else with the higher density so that the whole district amounts to 15 per acre. They also, and they're, they're in the process of developing a tool to help us figure this out. But the, based on sort of your partialization, based on the size of your district, based on sort of the dimensional and use requirements that you put in, there's gotta be the potential for 2,461 units. That doesn't mean that we are gonna be held responsible for building 2,461 new multifamily units. In fact, we're responsible for building zero units. What we're responsible for is creating zoning that reasonably allows those buildings, those units to be built. And so, you know, is it, is it all or nothing? I mean, there are, there are certain threshold criteria that have to be met to be deemed compliant. That's what the guidelines lay out. And then the, you know, the, the sort of, the specific penalties are the same as they've been, and those are based in the statute. It's, it's loss of eligibility for, for certain state grant funding, MassWorks being, being the main one. Although DHCD has been as, as clear, I think, as they can be that they're gonna take compliance into account in other, they've said in the past DHCD grants, but the final guidelines, I think, and I can double-check this, talk about, they use the term state grants. I don't know if that means any state funding or just DHCD funding. There's specific language in the guidelines about that, but really that's the, that's the stick that's in legislation is the eligibility for these grants. DAC though has been, you know, in every communication we've had with them, you know, webinars, written communications, it's been very clear that, you know, that it's, it's a mandate and a requirement, you know, to create these districts. How that actually manifests itself as it relates to non-compliance beyond the sort of grant eligibility, I don't know. But they've been very clear about that.
Tim, go ahead, Sean.
One last one, Meredith. Is it, is it possible, Tim, for you to, to try to identify what the, what the potential loss is if we cannot achieve this?
Well, I, I, I mean, so, so what I'll tell you is this. We, we have, in the sort of 11-year history of the MassWorks program, we've gotten about a million dollars in MassWorks funding, and most of that went towards roadway and streetscape improvements on Elliot Street and the Central Ave and Milton Village Business Districts. So that, that was a big MassWorks project, you know, 10 or 11 years ago. We have not, I don't think we've applied for MassWorks funding since then. And so that's really the extent of our kind of coverage of those programs. We are not a housing choice community. That's the other grant program that, that is specified in the legislation. And then there's another grant program that is relatively small and that, you know, we haven't gotten money from either. So, you know, MassWorks is a big program. They give out, you know, tens of millions of dollars a year for infrastructure projects. And so, you know, we haven't been big players in that game in the past, but there's, there's plenty of infrastructure needs in the town that we could potentially use that money for.
So I just want to make sure I understand what you said. We've received 1 million over 10 years?
That's correct. It might be 1.2 million, but it's generally this.
Tim, my understanding was a significant portion of that actually went to DCR and went to the Turner's Pond Project? Is that not correct?
No, so technically there's been two MassWorks grants for work within Milton Town Limits. The, the Central Ave, Milton Village, Elliot Street project was a significant infrastructure project. I don't know if it was exactly a million bucks, but, and then it was, Houghton's Pond got money through MassWorks for some improvements down there around the same time period. That wasn't a town-led grant, grant request. I think that was DCR-led, but, you know, it did benefit, you know, facilities within the town of Milton. I, you know, that counts for MassWorks purposes, but I think, you know, we look at that Central Ave, Elliot Street project as kind of the main thing that we've used MassWorks for.
And do you see an opportunity for us to increase what we could receive through the MassWorks programs, through any of them? And, and, and what, what in your estimation might we be able to, if we averaged a million over 10 years, where we're receiving around $100,000 a year? What's, what's a reasonable expectation that the town could receive through those grant programs?
I don't have it at my fingertips. I have it on my, on my office machine, but the, the DCD did send around a spreadsheet that kind of gives the history. It's, it's, I think it's a 12-year-old program, and so it lists every grant that every town has kind of received. And I did a little bit of analysis on, on who's gotten those grants. So obviously, City of Boston gets a ton of money through MassWorks. They get multiple grants every year. There's a few other towns that have gotten, you know, up to four or five grants in that kind of 12-year history. There's many towns that have never received a MassWorks grant. And then there's a lot of towns like Milton that have gotten one and kind of, you know, haven't really been players in the game since then. So I don't have a firm answer to the question, except to say that, you know, the towns that are consistent applicants get more money. It's not like a sort of, it's, it's, these are competitive grants. They're not easy to get. You don't get one every year unless you're, you know, Boston. But there are towns, you know, you know, and, you know, there are the Cambridges and the Lols and the Wisters of the world, but also there are towns not dissimilar from Milton that have gotten three and four and five of these grants.
Okay. Well, for the next meeting, Tim, would you be able to look into that a little bit and, and share with us in our next meeting some of, what other towns have got? I, I honestly, for the kind of change that that could require throughout the town, I think we have a responsibility to understand what we would be foregoing if we're not able to accomplish it.
I will, I will work up that analysis that I did into a nicely digestible form, and I'll distribute that as soon as I have it done, and we can talk about it at the next meeting. Absolutely.
That'd be great. Thank you. Sorry, Meredith. I went from one question away to four.
That's great. I'm happy to listen to your questions and hear Tim's answers. Tim, I just had a question on, I know you said they would be providing a tool. Are there any other services that will be provided to the town or funding for consultants on this?
Yes. So the, the, the state has been very upfront about their desire to provide technical assistance, you know, both in the form of resources, but also kind of monetary resources for consulting services. So we've actually already put in a grant application for technical assistance. It's just, it was just an automatic thing that we did because we knew that we were gonna need help no matter what we decided to do. But, so that's through the Community One Stop for Growth Program. The Massachusetts Housing Partnership also has technical assistance funding that's available. They've also got technical assistance resources in terms of mapping and data. So there, there's a lot out there. And, and I think, you know, one, one way that I'm kind of looking at this is, you know, you know, I think we, you know, A, need to come to, you know, a clear kind of decision about, you know, how we wanna approach, you know, compliance with this. And then I, I, I think we need to get someone on board, um, to help us out, because, you know, I, I've got my own ideas. I think everyone potentially has their own ideas, you know, when it comes to writing really, you know, specific kind of technical zoning that, that meets very specific requirements. You know, we're gonna wanna have, you know, that, so, um, you know, we're on the lookout for those opportunities. And, you know, we'll continue to keep you posted on that.
Great, great. Thank you, Tim. Any other questions on this subject?
Yeah, um, I was just wondering, um, when we meet with the selectmen, who takes the lead on this? Is it the selectmen take the lead, or is it a planning board led initiative?
I, I really do, I, I think it's up, it's up to, to you. And by you, I mean elected leaders. Because this is, this is zoning, obviously. Um, you know, so that's, that's, you know, very much the purview of the planning board. We'll have to have, um, the planning board public hearing at the very least, and, and I have to assume that the planning board is gonna wanna have involvement. Um, you know, the, the reason, the reason why I, I, I think it's wise to kind of include the select board in the conversation is because, um, wh- while it is zoning, the, the nature of the town's compliance has town-wide consequences, which I think the select board should have an opportunity to weigh in on. Um, and, and then I think, you know, just generally, you know, working out, you know, does this wanna be sort of a standing thing on the planning board agenda? Do we wanna let, you know, the department kind of work with the consultant and kind of, you know, hand the planning board something to work with? There's a lot of options on the table. Um, but I, I, I think that, you know, because it's a statewide mandate with, with sort of non-zoning related kind of consequences to it. I think it makes sense to at least have that joint discussion with the select board. But I think it's up to, it's up to the two of tho- those boards to kind of figure out exactly what the approach is.
Tim, Tim, uh, what, what are the town-wide consequences that, that, um, you consider?
Well, so, I mean, ju- just very, you know, very, very simply, you know, based on what's in the legislation, um, you know, Mass Works is an infrastructure program. Um, and so if the town were to want to avail itself of a Mass Works grant to, to an infrastructure project, sidewalks or pipes or, or, or something. You know, that's something that the select board would be interested in. They would probably initiate that grant application process. You know, consultation with D P W and engineering. And so it's, it's one of these things where, you know, the, the zoning is a planning board issue, but if we decide not to do it, then it becomes a town issue. Um, you know, the other thing that I'll say is that, um, D U C D has been, you know, I said they've been clear. They've also been coy, quite frankly. You know, in terms of, you know, saying, you know, we, we think that this is a requirement, um, the legislation says we shall have this dis- this district and, and, and whatever. I don't know what potential other legal consequences there may be, um, you know, for a town that's not compliant with, with legislation that says that you shall do this, that, or the other thing. Um, I just don't know. Um, and, you know, there's a lot of speculation, but there's really been no clarity on, you know, is the Attorney General gonna look at things and, and take some sort of action? You know, is, is, are other grant funds or other kind of formula funds, you know, at risk? There's been, like I said, a lot of speculation among, you know, people that follow these issues, but really no clarity or certainty.
You know, I think it would be beneficial maybe for a conversation between yourself and Kevin Freitag. And, and just, just my initial, my initial concern is to create a fifty-acre land area in town, twenty-five of which have to be within a half mile of, of the transitway. And to achieve zoning that would allow us to add twenty four hundred, uh, approximately housing units seems to be an incredibly challenging undertaking. And, um, I think it would be good, in our last meeting, I think I termed what you were referring to as compulsory, I termed, um, incentivization, because seems to me that if you don't accomplish what they're asking you to accomplish, you forego, at least if the example of the last ten years is consistent with the next ten years, a hundred thousand dollars a year. But, um, I, I think we should have, get, get at least a basic understanding of the legal responsibility the town has based on Kevin's, Kevin's interpretation. It just sounds like a small amount of money to forego based on the past ten years for something that could be very costly to be able to create.
I will, I'll, I'll certainly reach out to Kevin and, and, um, have a conversation with him. I, I may, I may want him to, to the extent that he's able, you know, put an opinion in writing, um, you know, because I, I know there has been, you know, other, other commentary about, you know, the you know, the, the, the sort of regulatory basis that D H C D has, you know, to promulgate these guidelines. There's a lot of debate, not just in town, but outside of town, um, you know, but I'll, I'll, I'll have that conversation and report back, um, either, either in writing, or, or we may wanna have Kevin even come to the meeting to kind of
That'd be great. That'd be terrific. Tim, thanks very much.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, um, if there is anyone else who'd like to ask a question of Tim on this? All right, uh, then let's move on. Um, I'd like to open up, um, citizen speak. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak on anything, uh, that is not on our agenda, um, please feel free to join us and raise your hand. And I'm not seeing any hands go up, so, um, at this time. So we can now move on to new business, uh, one ninety-three Central Avenue. The site plan amendments related to tree pruning and removal. And I see, I believe, Sunny and Todd, maybe? I don't know if Todd is. Who is, who would like to speak on their behalf?
So, uh, let me, uh, Meredith, if you don't mind, just and I'll, I'll pass this along to, to Marion and the team in just a minute. Um, so we, we approved, or you, sorry, approved a site plan approval for one ninety-three, um, Central Ave recently. That's the former Who's It Club, the Goddard School, preschool. That site plan, um, identified certain, um, trees for preservation. So in the course of the initial construction work, there's a core going up, there's a foundation being built. The development team has identified trees that, um, their arborist has, has kind of advised them, uh, may not be, may, may not be trees that are, that are, that are gonna be able to go the distance up through this project. You know, whether, whether because of their location or because of their, their condition or their health. The, the main, the main thing I, I, we advised the team to kind of approach tonight with was allowing the planning board to make a determination as to whether, which of these site plan changes amount to, um, minor changes that, okay, in the course of construction, you have a dead tree. We all agree you should take a dead tree down. Um, and, and which ones kind of represent substantial amendments, which, which would require, you know, a new public hearing and an amendment to, um, to the site plan approval. And so that's why we're here tonight. Um, the team has, um, sent in, um, a number of materials. Josh was able to process those last week, um, when they came in. Um, and, and I'll let Marion and, and her team talk in a little bit more detail about, um, what exactly we're looking at.
Okay, um, this is Todd from Acela. I can outline what we were looking at. Starting on Central Ave in the, the center of the old Circular Drive, there's one large oak that hangs out over Central Ave that is a, a risk to the power lines and the street itself that our arborist recommended taking down. There's an old oak directly adjacent to that one that is dead. Everything else out there is in full bloom and that one has no bloom whatsoever. So they recommended taking that one down as well. As we go down the side of, uh, Columbine, there's a large real, uh, thirty-six inch diameter, I believe, oak about halfway down that we'd like to prune back because it, it invades the footprint of the new building. And to be able to build that building, we would have to prune that back. And then as we go down to the, the end corner on Columbine, there's a, a large Norway spruce that they recommended we remove because that one is killing itself currently. And they think that it's, it's past the point of saving. And then the last one is a large pine back in the middle rear of the site at the back corner of the building. Uh, in order to excavate for the footings and foundations, we had to cut into that root system. So we had them come out and take a look at that. And based on that, plus they see some decay and rot in the base of the tree, they recommended that one come down from a safety concern where it's proximity to the building and the future playgrounds.
Can you, uh, can you hear me? Hi, um, thank you. That's, that's a good summary. Um, this was brought to my attention a week and a half ago or so. But I know that Acela Construction has been reviewing all the features of the, the site as they've begun construction, which is definitely underway now on the site. Um, I did send a brief letter. I just recapped very briefly for any new members of the planning board. The history, we're probably familiar with it anyway, but that, you know, this was to be a renovation project of the Who's It Club. Then there was a catastrophic fire just as construction work began. And the school, the building was destroyed. So the applicant had to go back to the planning board and apply for what we term an amendment of the site plan approval, but it was a very significant overall amendment of the site plan because now you had to locate a new building because of the zoning bylaw requirements had to be located at the proper setbacks from side lot lines. And the building then had to be in a different orientation. So some of the, a good deal of the, um, landscaping review that had occurred before was still useful in that process. And not a lot of the edge landscaping was changed as a result of the new project. But there wa- there was a lot more work on the landscaping plan and what new trees were gonna be added to the site. So one of the things I did in my letter is just for your information, list the trees that are being added to the site by the applicant. Four river birch, two tulip trees, one American elm on Columbine roadside. Central Avenue front side, one tri-colored dapple, dappled willow, three river birch, one Colorado blue spruce. And, and that was, um, at the time, thought those were going to be additions to the trees that were to remain. I do recall though, for the two oak trees in front of the building, of the proposed building, um, one of them was half-dead. It looked pretty dead two years ago. But everybody said, well, let's just leave it and see how it does. Maybe it's gonna do okay. But instead, with the fire and then possibly the effect of the drought, I don't know, but it's completely dead now. There's no question. I just looked at it yesterday. Um, and I don't think there's a lot of, a lot we can say about that. That tree is gonna have to be taken down. As far as the oak that's leaning out, it, you can see that it's leaning. I would have to leave that to the recommendations of the arborists. Whatever the view of the planning board is, Acela Construction is responding to the comment that it's hanging out over, um, utility lines and could be a problem in that regard. Um, so I don't have a lot to say about those. On this side, the Columbine roadside, the large oak, we had a lot of discussion about that when we were making the, doing the plans, site plans. And, um, the site building was located so that all the roots wouldn't have to be destroyed for that. But it's still a very large oak tree and it still extends out, you know, in the direction of the building. So the, Acela's recommendation is they need to do more pruning on one side. That's not designed to kill the tree, but to preserve it. Um, and then finally, um, the Norway maple, by the way, my, my plant says Norway maple. And you said Norway spruce, um, Todd. So I'm not absolutely sure which it is. And Norway maple certainly is an invasive species. And I thought that's what it was, but in any case, yeah, we left that alone at the time because it was a nice big tree, but it is an invasive species tree. So sometimes with these site plans, invasive species are removed and a new tree is planted that, that's a better, uh, healthier type for this, um, New England environment. So that would be an option, would be to take it down and, and replace or put another tree somewhere in the general area. And then the final one, the large pine tree, there are, there's a whole group of large pine trees in that rear corner. This tree is the one at the corner that's closest to where the building is going to be. I, I just have to say, you know, I'm not a tree expert, but you got a, we received a very long report from the tree company. And for those who take particular interest in this type of val- valuation, you'll wanna review that and see if you agree. But it's pretty clear that tree's gonna be very close to the building. This is a building that's gonna house a daycare and preschool program, and it's gonna have play areas in the back and on the side near that corner. So it certainly is a concern from my viewpoint, but I'm sure the members of the planning board will have their own questions and, uh, to ask. So that's a quick summary of what's being proposed. I think Todd is the best person to answer more specific questions. He's on site every day. He's spent a lot of time studying the existing plans and what they're going to have to do. So I hope that, you know, he'll be able to help you if you have questions. And as far as the, um, what type of modification this is of the site plan, I guess the main concern here for the contractor and for the owner is moving forward, they're certainly very far behind, years behind what they originally intended with this project. I've had a huge amount of additional expense. So whatever happens, if there has to be some kind of other review, it needs to be expedited as much as possible. I'm hoping that maybe these are not changes that would be considered substantial can- changes, but again, that's the planning board's decision. Thank you.
Marion, maybe if I, uh, uh, thank you both for a quick summary. One quick thing I'll add in addition to what we heard from Todd and Marion is, uh, uh, we are, we are actually going to plant new trees in the back. So the recommendation, uh, that is coming as a result of either, you know, the trees, you know, uh, I guess, uh, health or safety, uh, so that's just the first part. You know, realizing, you know, that every t- tree we remove, we want to replace that. So you will also notice we are willing to add trees and based on the landscaping plan, because it's already very dense, probably in the back of the property for every tree that we remove, at least one, and in some cases for the large one, up to three trees. So I just wanna add that, Marion. In addition to removing, we will be replacing them with, uh, new trees. Thank you.
And the, the only thing I can add there is that, um, that rear lot line with the neighbors on that rear lot line, I've had a lot of meetings and discussion, um, they've come to all the meetings, and they were interested in seeing some trees planted along that rear lot line. We already had proposed planting a lot of trees. The budget at the, at, when this was completed didn't really allow, but under these circumstances with these additional tree, excuse me, trees proposed for removal, um, I believe that will be very welcome news for those neighbors. Um, the choice of trees, again, would have to be from the town's tree list. They also have to be trees that are safe for a childcare facility. But they could be, um, something that could be discussed with that neighbor, uh, in particular, because they're right next to that lot line.
Thank you, Marion.
Meredith, if I could just make one comment on the new trees that were just discussed. Size of tree would be important. And, uh, Maggie certainly is has expertise in this area, but the value of the tree that's being removed is really quite significant. And if we, if we are discussing replacement with other trees, calipers of tree and I, I would hope that we would work hard to get sized trees that are, and I'll defer to Maggie for your comments on that, Maggie. But I think that'd be really important.
Great. Marion, do you know if you, um, made this presentation, uh, or brought this before the shade tree committee yet? I know before you do any pruning or taking down of trees, um, you're required to go before them as well?
Well, I'm not required to for these trees. That's not to say that we wouldn't go before them. They looked at the whole site plan before, but we're required to go before them if they are street trees. That means they're on the town's land. So none of these are street trees.
Okay, they're not.
But their advice is always very helpful in terms of choice of trees. Even in terms of, um, if you pick a species of tree that's desirable, then the question becomes, and Maggie, I think, will have some knowledge about this, but what is the largest size that's, what's the optimal size for planting a particular species? But what is the largest size that's, what's the optimal size for planting a particular species of tree? Because it's not the same for all of them. Some trees, well, I, I mean, you can't say, you know, it should be X number of calipers or it should be X height, but you, you would, uh, one possibility would be that the planning board would specify that the maximum size, um, tree that will provide for healthy future growth should be required. We don't even have the species of trees because I think that's something that the neighbor would want to weigh in on. Um, but I, I mean, that's a, a discussion that often occurs. And sometimes you see these new developments and the trees are really tiny. It takes years for them to reach even a reasonable growth. So the size is very important, certainly. But maybe the language should be general enough to allow for the proper size for the particular species of tree.
Great. And Cheryl is with us now and has her hand up. Cheryl? A question?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, um, trying to recall, I mean, I certainly recall this project and the discussion around it and our discussion around all projects, um, in terms of tree protection. So while I understand that the trees, um, in question here, uh, pose a safety risk and, you know, there's a, I respect the arborist's opinion about that. Uh, but the tree in the back, um, obviously has suffered from construction impacts. And it is in the arborist's report that in fact, that's why the health of that tree, um, has deteriorated substantially. So the construction management plan that I believe this was submitted with this, and I didn't get a chance to locate it, uh, should have required, um, protection of trees that were to be preserved. And, you know, um, this is something that comes up on all projects. It's just, I even took a photograph recently and sent it to Tim of construction trailers parked right underneath beautiful town on trees with it at the central fire station. You know, putting load on the root balls of those existing trees. And we know from testimony and prior, uh, in other hearings that, um, um, construction impacts on trees, uh, is substantial and it may not be seen immediately. It may be five years later that the trees die. And so I, I just would like to, um, I guess, um, um, ask the contractor and the, and the owners here to be, um, mindful of our request to, in the construction management plan and other projects, we have tree preservation plans, is to really be diligent about protecting and come to us before the damage and say, look, we can't build this, we're, we're, we're constrained too much. And we, you know, this tree is impacting our ability to build it. And rather than come to us afterwards when the tree's been damaged substantially by the construction impacts. And so, um, uh, I, I would say on this, the other aspect of this is the replacement. There should definitely be replacement, um, that's comparable to what replacement may have been in other locations where trees were taken down, uh, when they weren't supposed to be. Um, or also with the way the conservation commission does it, when they approve projects, uh, when tree, with tree removal, they have a, um, a rate of, of replacement. I don't know what it is off the top of my head.
Three to one.
Yeah, that we, uh, and so, and relative to size as well, I think certain caliber. Um, so, um, I would like to see, um, at least, um, what the proposed replacement is before we make a decision. And I'd also, um, like a commitment from the contractor, uh, for, uh, protection, providing protection for remaining trees that might be, uh, in the construction zones. Okay?
That's great.
I just have one question, and I know you're still discussing this, but, um, so Cheryl, what you're saying is the, the description saying that the, um, Norway maple is killed by its own girdling? Does that, you're saying that means that construction, um,
No, no, not, not that one, Mary.
What 28 reporting?
Yeah, let me just see which number it is in the report. Let's see. It was tree four. And the photographs that are in the, uh, report from the arborist.
Pine tree?
Uh, well, let me see what it says here, tree four. I mean, there's photographs in the back.
That would be the pine tree.
Yeah, the pine tree.
Yeah, the pine tree in the back.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the report says that it was damaged from construction.
Okay.
And impacted a tell. So, um, I'm not talking about ones that had natural challenges.
I got it. Thank you. We, yes. Um, Todd, do you want to address the, um, tree protection going forward? And then, um, I don't know the sunny, we don't have the replacement trees with us to show you tonight. I, because I, and I happen to think that, I believe that I have to consult with the neighbors on that side. And that I would like some guidance from the planning board though, as I believe the proper guidance would be, um, these trees have to be trees on the towns, from the town's tree, acceptable tree list. That does come from the street tree, um, committee, that they must be, um, that, well, give us some guidance as to the number of trees you think is appropriate. And then for the size, I would recommend the, the language that I described because you have to go back to an arborist to get recommendations for the best size for planting. Um, let's see, there was something else, but I can't remember now. But anyway, just in general, those would be guidelines that I would want to take to a neighbor and say, this is what we're doing. We're proposing planting trees along this back edge. And these are the choices of trees that we, that are safe for a childcare facility and that are also non-invasive and native New England species are, are, or trees that will thrive in this area. Does that sound appropriate?
Now, one of the things I recall about this project when it came before is that I, I had requested that the landscape plan be prepared by a landscape architect. And, um, you know, rather than a civil engineer. But if you have someone who, uh, can make the recommendations about what the replacements are that we can review. Um, and I think consulting with the, uh, shade tree advisory committee is, is a good idea. Um, so I'll look forward to hearing more information on this.
Okay. We have an arborist. So we would be able to use the arborist for advice as well.
And Maggie, you had a question too?
Um, so all of my comments were very similar to what Cheryl, um, said. I do think that we should sort of follow, um, the history of the conservation replacement, which is three to one if you're doing a tree. And if you're replacing with shrubs, um, then it's six to one. Um, and I'm a huge proponent of planting the largest tree possible, especially on a new development. Um, I think part of our responsibility is to, um, mitigate any impacts um, that it might have on the neighbor or any neighbor. And as they say, the best time to plant trees 20 years ago and the next best time is today. So I, when I was looking at the, um, landscape list, I was really disappointed to see that they were only spec at eight to 10 feet. Um, that is what a traditional homeowner would plant in their, um, front yard or backyard. And I would think that under, um, new construction, especially on a site that's looking, quite frankly, as a wasteland right now, it's really very sad, the whole site. And it's not this, um, uh, it's not the applicant's fault, but it's really, really sad that, um, you know, that damage has been done to the history, to the town of Milton. We kind of want to get it back as fast as we can and create, um, more of a leaf canopy. So I would say that, um, I'm less concerned as the type of tree. Of course, Norway maples, they're invasive. Um, but I'm more concerned about the height. And I think you, as, as a contractor, um, 15 to 20 foot trees are, um, should be planted. Um, I, I couldn't find the overall height of the building. Um, but if you plant a 15 to 20 foot tree, that's probably only coming up, you know, to half the height of the building and probably the trees that are there now are 50 feet. Um, and I think providing some flexibility on the variety as long as it is on the, um, the list from the shade tree advisory committee. Because sometimes it's really hard to find plant material when you need it. And especially with the pandemic hap- happening, there's been a, um, a shortage of trees. Um, so I would provide the flexibility of, um, variety type as long as the neighbors approve it and the shade tree advisory committee approves it.
Great, thank you. Can I make a comment or are you?
Sure.
Okay, um, that I listened to that and I understand exactly what you're saying, Maggie. Although I'm not sure about the spacing comment, it's kind of confusing because there are, there are existing trees and then there were new trees being planted among them, but that's only in certain areas. There were no trees on that rear lot line. And so these would be new trees, and I do believe that the neighbors will welcome that. Um, but, um, I, I think, I forgot what it was. Oh, I know. So there were four trees here that are being talked about being taken down. One of them is dead. When there's a dead tree, I'm not sure that it has to be three to one replacement. I'm just talking about what you, you require. I'm not saying it isn't desirable, the more the better. It, I mean, the nicer it will be and so forth, but it's also very expensive and so on and so forth. So I am speaking on behalf of the applicant who's undergone huge additional expense, but is facing this front, front and center. Um, the Norway maple, that was intended to remain. So certainly if you take that down, you're going to be looking at replacement of more than one. Um, the large oak tree that's leaning over, over Central Ave, I may be wrong, but it was my understanding that the town was rec, was agreeing or saying that that recommendation is, is valid and that that tree should be removed. It's hanging over utility lines in the right of way. Um, again, it's, it's not, the, the developer could leave that tree there. But it's not the best thing to do. So again, should we be doing three to one replacement for that tree? I don't know. The one in the back, the pine tree, yeah, that was never intended originally to be taken down. It's been damaged. It should be replaced and at a good ratio. So those are just some thoughts to keep in mind when you decide what's appropriate here. Um, but I think in general, the, as large as the trees can be and, and grow well. It's interesting Maggie's comment about the species because as you know, certain large evergreens grow very quickly and provide very good screening. And they're not always the most, you know, they're not, they don't have blossoms in the spring and that kind of thing. But again, I would think that the, um, I, I can't speak for the neighbor in back there, but if they're looking for more screening, they may be interested in that type of fast growing evergreen. So it would be nice to have some flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. Maggie, did you have something else you wanted to add here?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay. So just to add on, because I, I basically agree with everybody. Um, the tree that is dead on Central Avenue, uh, we, I don't think anyone has an issue. Take, please take that down. That's, um, it really is an eyesore. The, um, the Norway maple is an invasive, so I'm less concerned about, about that tree. Um, although it may still have some life in it, but, um, I'm less concerned. I would like to see the oak tree that is leaning away from the, the rock ledge, um, on Central Ave. Um, it, it needs pruning, certainly, but I would like to see that preserved because it gives a sense of one of the more mature trees in that area. And what's so beautiful and what we're trying to recreate in Milton is a tree canopy. And that is when they gracefully do hang over the street and you don't have just pavement. You, you are, um, it's an aesthetic, um, to a town to have older trees that do arch over, over roadway. So, um, I think it could be pruned, you know, so it's properly, um, and, and be ongoing, you know, maintenance, um, as older trees do need, but I would like to see that preserved. The one, um, but the other two I'm, I'm less concerned about. The other comment I had was, I was really surprised you were just going to leave low stumps. Um, I, I think that is an eyesore. I think, I think those, I think any trees that are taken down, the stump should be ground. Um, and, and, and completely removed. I don't think just cutting it down, leaving low stumps is appropriate. Um, I know our town wouldn't do that. Um, it should be, it should be, um, and homeowners would not do that. So I think those should all be ground, um, and not just left to low stumps. So those are my comments.
That is definitely the plan. The arborist was going to cut the trees down to a low stump and then we bring a company in to grind everything. So absolutely, those would all be ground.
Okay, great.
Meredith, I just, I just had one comment I, I wanted to make. Um, Marion, thanks for the explanation and, um, for, uh, the, um, the proposed solutions. Uh, the three to one ratio, I, I just, I just have, I suppose I understand the three to one ratio, if that's what it is, if there's a planned tree removal. But, you know, to the point that Cheryl made earlier, the project was approved with an expectation that the pine tree would remain. And when a tree that is part of a planned, uh, approval to remain becomes removed, I think the applicant should be very open minded in terms of what they do to, uh, compensate for a tree that wasn't protected but was, um, expected to be protected. I don't know if you find that to be a reasonable statement or not, Marion, but, um, you know.
I understand your point.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I guess we, I guess this is where you need guidance from the planning board in general on what's appropriate. And so, you know, while I'm saying some trees maybe don't need that type of compensation, this tree in, in particular, um, it does look like it was damaged by the construction. It now looks like it's going to have to come down. So what do we do to compensate for that?
Right, right. And Marion, I was not part of the planning board at the time that this project was approved, but other members of the planning board here were. And, uh, I, I, I feel the obligation that Cheryl spoke of earlier. Um, you know, the project was approved with an expectation that the tree would be protected. So I think that needs to be kept in mind as a, as a resolution is envisioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'm sorry, if, if I may, a quick comment.
Sure.
So the tree which you're referring to, which is leaning over, uh, on Central Ave, uh, this is my understanding and I could be wrong. I think it was, um, uh, one of the visits from, uh, Tim, uh, during, I guess, construction and the recommendation actually originated initially from the town that potentially that we, uh, remove. That's when the arborist came in and then, uh, then he came and he inspected other trees. Uh, by all means, if that tree can be saved and just pruned, I don't see any, uh, any issue with that. My, this was my understanding and I'm not an arborist, but because there's so many heavy ledges there, uh, the tree, even if you, if, even if we were to save it, might not have the same blossom. So just keep that in mind. Uh, the entire board, I guess, please keep that in mind. Yes, we can remove that dead tree. And if the recommendation is to save this one, by all means, I'm for saving as many trees as we can. Uh, but I just wanted to add that, you know.
Thank you.
That initially came from the town, but happy, uh, to comply with your recommendations.
Yeah, just, just had a little clarity. Thank you for that, Si. So, um, uh, Joe Prondak, the building commissioner and I, on a, um, on a site inspection during the beginning of the construction process, did take a look at that tree and, and recommend that, that the team take a look at it. Um, it, it is, it, it has been, you know, dramatically kind of angled over Central Ave for a while. Um, and so, you know, not being, not being arborist, but being, you know, guys that have been around development projects before, um, you know, we did think that it was worth taking a look at. Um, and, um, but, but the fact, the fact does remain that, you know, it is, it is shown on the plan and so would require, you know, an affirmative kind of decision from the planning board. Uh, you know, again, whether that's a, a minor amendment or a substantial amendment, um, you know, to the site plan. Um, you know, we, we do appreciate the arborist taking a look at that and offering his, his expert opinion. Um, you know, because it is hanging over Central Ave and it's hanging over some utility lines.
So, you know, I think if we're, if we're in agreement that the, obviously the Central Ave, the, the dead tree should come down. I don't think anyone's questioning that. Um, if the dead, if the Norway maple was taken down, then I think what we would be asking, um, which is a separate agreement from, you know, what, what you agree, Marion, with the neighbors, I, I think, behind the building. Um, that would be between the two of you, but I, I think what we would. That would be between the two of you, but I I think what we would certainly like to see is probably three trees to to, you know, to replace the one that the pine that's being taken down and was damaged. Um I think that seems reasonable. Um I don't know what the other board members feel, but if we ask for additional three trees on the site of of substantial, you know, of good size. That seems fair to me, but um I don't know what the other members think.
I think um I would support three new trees, the size of which and the species of which I don't have expertise to recommend, but um if there are risks and come back, you know, and as far as the exact location, come back with a recommendation, I think we could take a look at that. And then um I would like to understand if there's any other trees that are at risk and what protective measures are going to be taken. There's still a lot of construction to happen on this site. Excavation, I understand, is done, but you know, there's the way materials are moved on the site, the equipment, uh the storage of materials. That's all still going to be at play. And uh I just want to really uh implore the the contractor to be serious about protecting any other trees that and and I don't remember which ones might be impacted, but anything really close. The building is close to the property line, you know, on the Columbine roadside, so anything along that side really needs some protection. And I haven't been by there recently to study it carefully, but um I am concerned about that still.
And I just wanted, on the original, on the plan that we have, um there is listed the Princeton Elm and a tulip tree. Both of those um grow to beautiful, mature trees. You might, that might be, um those might be trees that you might consider adding one or two more of those on the on the site. And those are on the shade tree committee's list. The Princeton Elm sort of um emulates the old American Elms that were all throughout Milton, on the streets of Milton that were lost, so.
Correct.
Great tree, yeah.
I can speak real quickly to the protection of the remainder of the trees. We will we'll take a good look tomorrow to see if there's anything else at risk from just from a logistics or locational standpoint, the pine that was damaged, we we're definitely looking to protect all the existing trees. We're very cautious of it. The pine, the only way to to actually put the foundations and footings in was to get into that root system a little bit. And I understand that once that was once we realized that, that should have been brought to everyone's attention and I apologize for that. But it was, I just wanted to be clear that it wasn't damaged just from general construction or that from neglect or miss, you know, not paying attention to it. It was strictly just what we needed to do to excavate for the footings and foundations. We'll make sure all the rest of the trees on site are protected throughout the process. If there's anything else that is being done from a construction standpoint, that we'll have no option, but to impact a tree, we'll we'll address that with the board. We'll look into it tomorrow just to confirm there's nothing else that's a concern. And if there is, we'll make sure we let everybody know now so that we can address it ahead of time.
Thank you. That's great. Appreciate that. Anyone else on this topic? Any other? All right. So Marion, does that seem reasonable to come back with?
It does. What I'm um what I'm hearing you say, I want to make sure I'm clear, is that um you are you are agreeing that that the trees proposed can be removed except for the oak tree in front. What you're asking there is that that we look, that we trim. And the arborist will need to give us recommendations on that, but it it makes sense to me to use a more gradual approach with that tree. I'm not an arborist, though. But to try to do some trimming, you know, like the utility companies do, they trim and they trim. Sometimes they trim so much, finally you say there's no tree left, but that's not necessarily where we are. I I I I agree with the comments personally. Sorry, everybody from Accella and Sunny, but that's a big tree and it's, it really does sort of frame the front of the building a little bit. So if there is a way to trim it and keep it, that would be great. So we would come back to you to affirm that that trimming it is possible, perhaps. I would provide at your next meeting, arborist's recommendation as to how to trim that tree. And we would come back with a an uh plan, excuse me, for the planting of three new trees. Possibly incorporating the elm, an elm species that we're using on the side and a tulip species at least um to be discussed with the neighbor. And then there's, you know, I don't know what else. There could be a tree that would be a fast growing evergreen, perhaps. Anyway, a plan for the new trees would be produced for you for your next meeting. You'll get that in writing and you could um certainly let us know if we want us to come in and discuss that with you at the next meeting, which I think is in two weeks. Am I correct about that? Um I just wanted to ask Todd if if he feels that's reasonable in terms of timing. I'm willing to meet with the neighbors or to email with them about the types of trees. But do you think you can get that plan for new trees together, um working with the arborist and get a tree trimming plan for the oak in front in time for the next meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Marion, could I ask just one question, Marion? If in the in the in the planning effort to replace the pine with three trees, if by chance and I I acknowledge that Cheryl had said that three trees would be acceptable, but as you look at it, if four makes more sense and looks like it would provide a better improvement, please be considerate and go to four. I I I I don't know the site well enough. You may accomplish just as much with three as you will with four. But I I would just ask the applicant to be open minded and create the best improvement that you could, considering that we've lost the pine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And uh Maggie and then Rich also after him, after Maggie.
That's what I was sort of going to say. They they've proposed to plant four to six new trees for taking down the four. So I just don't want to shortchange the site or the neighbors by kind of settling on three when the offer was up to six.
It's an excellent point.
Yes, actually, that's. I'm I'm open. Yes, Rich?
Yes, um yeah, I I'm obviously not a tree expert. I just, I know that some of those trees that, you know, some that we're talking about, some are, that we're talking about can ruin sidewalks. So the ones that are going to be right near the sidewalks, it'd be nice if they considered that, just because a lot of the trees that we seem to put in destroy sidewalks and then you got to get on the list to have them fixed and fix forever. It's just not safe for kids riding bikes along those streets, especially main roads.
So possibly um just to comment on that. Rather than replacing the, you know, a tree, well, you know, the Norway maple roots will be there. You're not going to plant a tree right in the same position. Um but you're suggesting that maybe a little bit further in and away from the sidewalk um might be better in the long run. Um and we'll certainly um discuss that with the arborist and try to get the best possible placement recommendation, as well as number of trees.
So from my hearing that we would like to ask for four trees rather than three, just, and I, again, I think it's important that we get sizable trees and that we get trees that will really mature and and have a height that will that will buffer the the large structure.
I think too, again, I would look to an arborist or um another expert to advise. But I understand some trees, their root systems expand horizontally more than others. Um and the other thing is, to your point earlier, Meredith, about um a shade canopy on over paved areas, it's something that um I know other communities, including Boston, is really focusing on uh to reduce heat island effect. And yeah, so uh to the point of um moving it away from the sidewalk, we need to have a balance between providing that shade and not damaging the sidewalk.
Okay. So balance between root spreading and the sidewalk issue and providing as much as shade as as possible over pavement. So we get that. Okay, I took some notes on that.
And particularly on the Columbine roadside, I think, you know, being sensitive to the neighbors and having a buffer, giving them some privacy screening is to add on that side as well. That's great.
Yeah, and I mean, keeping that tree was, that was an issue because of that, you know, it was because it was sizable and yeah, so you're right. We talked about that during the site plan review and there should be careful thought as to what tree should be planted if that's going to come down.
Yeah, I would I would say maybe be more flexible on the number of trees, say somewhere between four and six. Sort of depending on the height that they propose. Because if they're only going to propose eight to 10 foot, then maybe they need six. But if they are proposing, you know, a 15 to 20 foot, then we'd feel more comfortable accepting um fewer trees.
Okay, good point. The other issue when you, you know, in developing a tree plan, which I'm quite aware of, is of course the ultimate growth and spread of each tree. So you know, they, yeah, they have to be planted so that they'll have enough room to grow well, but I'm, we all, Maggie knows that, and I'm sure the rest of us have probably encountered that on our own properties too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much. Is any anyone else, any other comments? Before we let Marion go?
I just want to ask you to take a vote recommending these these changes as minor modifications of the site plan because they are modifications and I think they do require a vote by the planning board, hopefully a majority vote in favor of approving the removal of the trees and replacing them and and planting new trees planned to be provided to the planning board at their next meeting, which is, you know what the date is. You can put that in your recommendation and mean your vote. Does that, does that make sense? Anybody, Tim? I think we need a vote on that.
I agree.
Subject to seeing the plan.
Yeah, it's, your vote would be, the planning board votes to approve the tree removal proposed by the applicant in the letter from Accella dated August 2nd, 2022, um with the following conditions. That a a a plan will be brought back to the planning board um at their next meeting, whatever the date of that meeting is, to, for new trees to be planted along the rear lot line of the property. And um also a recommendation as to pruning rather than removing the leaning oak in front of the property. So that, those would be the two conditions that we have to come back with those recommendations for you at your next meeting. But you would be voting to approve the tree removal um as a vote tonight.
I, Marion, I don't know that we necessarily want to see all the trees along the back of the property line. Is that, that's what I was hearing you say. I mean, that.
Yeah, it doesn't have, I, they don't necessarily have to be, but when, if you look back at the site plan, you're going to see we've added a lot of, we really are planting trees on the Columbine roadside. There's there's little extra space in the front, even though one dead tree will be coming down because of the Columbine rocks and the driveway that enters on two sides. However, you can leave it open ended and and we will say that we will come back with a tree planting plan that we think is the best for the site and that's for you to review and approve or not. Is that better? I actually thought you'd ask.
I I almost would prefer to see that that plan, but um I, what do the other members think?
Sorry, to your point, Meredith, um if they are going to try to get larger trees, I probably would want to see them planted closer to the street. And save the smaller trees that were specked um on the original plan somewhere else on the property.
Oh, interesting.
Question, sorry, quick comment for us. Thank you. Meredith, I guess, everyone, thank you very much for your comments and suggestions. These are great. This is my understanding and speaking with the the landscape company who is reviewing the plan. This was their opinion and again, we'll confirm. They said there's already so many new trees being planted on the Columbine side. There might not be much room. That's why I think Marion was advocating or at least suggesting uh in the back. But if there is any way we can plant more trees on Columbine in order to have healthy growth rather than overcrowding, we will take that as an initial attempt. If that is not possible, then we'll come back saying, hey, we looked at it, there might not be room. Hence, we are going to go to the back. To be honest, it doesn't make a difference to us or to me. Because if we're going to plant them, we'd rather plant them where, you know, it's going to provide the best not only uh beauty as well as function in terms of shade and, you know, it looks nice. So it's more a matter of where they can be placed to accomplish all of them, the look, the feel, uh as well as, you know, make sure they grow healthily. Uh so we will look at that. So you know, great, great feedback. So rest assured, as Marion said, we'll come back with a plan uh to plant them and yes, we'll try on Columbine first. If not, then we'll come back and say, okay, this is why we are planting them in the back. But we'll have the board take a look at that before we move forward with the planting.
I just want to remind everybody that the trees that are being planted along the Columbine road edge were worked on with the Shade Tree Advisory Committee and were sizes and types of trees that they felt would do well in that location. In other words, near the sidewalk, overhanging the tree, over the at the street and also to be an attractive mix. And there was a lot of actually back and forth and discussion about the species of trees. That's not to say they wouldn't be changeable, um but I but I want everybody to know, including Maggie, that the Shade Tree Advisory Committee had a pretty good input into that. If there were to be changes to those trees being planted, we would have, we would definitely go back to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee to see if they support any such recommendations. And while they don't have jurisdiction over trees in the site, any uh plan, uh if they're available, will, you know, I will send the plan for tree replacement to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee for comments just to see if they have anything useful to add and they always do. And so only, they may be on vacation. So I just want to make sure that we can get a plan to you within two weeks. I suggested this as a condition to your vote because what a condition means is that if the condition isn't fulfilled, then the vote is not effective. So I'm just trying to have you uh sort of deal with this issue tonight. But with a condition that, you know, these two pieces of information still have to be provided and you have to approve those plans before um the vote can be carried out. I guess that's the way I would put it.
One thing I would say is that what um I think had been done elsewhere and might be done with the Conservation Commission at times that if all the the replacement trees can't be accommodated on site, that they be put elsewhere in town so that the tree canopy for the town is um is maintained even though not directly on the site. So if your arborist or landscape architect, designer, whomever is advising suggests that two trees of 20 feet height that Maggie suggests is a better height is what the site can accommodate, given the rest of the landscape and other site constraints, then maybe a third tree goes elsewhere.
Okay, that gives us more flexibility. Thank you. If the board agrees.
I would be fine to take a vote tonight if it's subject to that condition. Um but how do the other board members feel?
I agree with you, Meredith. I would also, just just to allow the applicant to move forward to, forward with whatever they can move forward with.
Sunny, I think he had.
Well, I'm I'm sorry, I lowered my.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that. Please go ahead.
And I guess I'd like to be clear about what the actual motion is here. Marion made a suggestion. I think since then, we've discussed some modification to it. So I don't know, Meredith, or Marion, rather, if you um if you took. So I don't know, Meredith, or Marion, rather, if you, if you took notes on how you suggested motion.
Well, they, I think the modifications relate to what the condition will be or conditions will be. The basic vote would be that the, the, the motion put before the board, that could be put before the board, would be that the planning board approves the request of, of the applicant to modify this, their approved site plan by removing the trees listed in the letter from Acela Construction Company dated August 2nd, 2022, with the exception of the oak tree that's leaning over Central Ave. And instead, that oak tree is to be trimmed, not removed. That's the first part. This, this is on the condition that.
Marion, I'm sorry, excuse me. Before you get to the conditions, that letter also had not just removal, but pruning.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
I think your decision would need to say both.
Yes, yes. So both the tree removal and the tree pruning recommended in the August 2nd letter, except for the removal of the oak tree on Central Ave that's leaning over Central Ave, which is to be instead pruned. On the condition that the applicant will submit a plan for repla, for new tree planting, either onsite or offsite, of at least three to four trees. The species and location of the trees to be shown on a plan and presented to the planning board at their next available meeting and to be, and, and which must be approved by the planning board before, well, just approved by the planning board. So it's kind of long, sorry.
I, I think that makes sense. And so I would make that motion.
Cheryl, Cheryl, could I, could I just clarify one point? I want to go back to what Maggie said. Maggie, you had indicated that the offer was to replace with four to six trees?
Correct.
And, and Marion, I think in what you just, what you just stated was three to four?
Right, and the board originally said three. We hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying. If we can do more trees, you would, everyone would like it. I don't know what the site can sustain. I gave you a rationale for why certain trees probably don't require a three to one replacement. One of them is dead, for example. But it's up to the planning board. So you, you're going to set that requirement. I understand what you're saying. We did say four to six trees, somewhere in these, this correspondence. And, you know, it's just, as Maggie said, you know, if you plant much bigger trees, then maybe you don't plant as many. So I mean, if you require four to six trees, it's more likely that they're going to be smaller. I think, but I don't really know. I, I would, I guess I'd prefer to see some flexibility, but really the planning board needs to make that decision, whatever you feel most comfortable with. We're happy to try to meet your requirements. I don't know where that leaves us, but.
Well, I think pretty much the whole motion remains except for changing from four to three to four to three to six.
Okay.
And then.
Then I, I'll make that amended motion.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Cheryl?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for spending a good amount of time on this. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith.
Two weeks or whenever your next meeting is.
Yes, we will confirm that. Okay, so moving on to our next item is discussion of the use of planning board budget for reimbursable grant expenses. And Tim, do you want to introduce this?
Yeah, so I hope, I hope this is a quick thing. So we have been in, in the process over the past two, year and a half, two years of, of really chasing after grant opportunities from the state to advance the goals, not just of the planning board, but, but of the whole town. And I, I think we've, we've done a pretty good job of that. One thing that is a little bit tricky is sometimes we'll get a grant, the Planning Assistance Grant, for instance, for East Fulton, is you get it, they give us the cash, we put it in an account and we spend it, easy peasy. Other grant programs are reimbursable, which means that if we get a $50,000 grant, what that means is we need to spend the money, send a bill to the grant corps, and they basically reimburse us for that bill, for whatever work, the project, you know, entailed. It's a grant, so at the end of the day, we will not have spent any town money. But in the meantime, you kind of need to have some cash to pay the bill originally. I kind of, I, I admit that I'm new to this game, so I don't know how other towns do it. But we, we currently have two reimbursable grants that we've gotten. And I think both of them are related to work in and around the Milton Landing, Milton Village area. One of them being a grant that we received from the Seaport Economic Council to do a feasibility study for maintenance dredging in Milton Landing and the Nippon River out to Dorchester Bay. And the other one is the Mass Trails Grant that we recently received for feasibility study, studying the, the, studying the feasibility of extending the Nippon Greenway over the sort of the abandoned rail bridge behind 88 War. So these are two projects that I think would go a really long way towards advancing the recreational open space and economic development goals that we have around Milton Village. But we don't have the kind of upfront cash. So like, you know, if our engineer bills us a thousand bucks, I need to have a thousand bucks to sort of pay him and then send a receipt over to the granting authority, the GCR, or the Seaport Economic Council. So I, what I'm asking is, is permission to use the planning board's plans and studies budget as kind of that fund. So that when I do get a invoice for one of these projects, I can use money from that planning board account and then reimburse that account when I get a check back from, from either GCR or, or the Seaport Economic Council. So, you know, ultimately, again, you know, because these are grants and, you know, the, the amount of, of the contracts we have with these firms are, you know, the amount that the grant is, there's no, there's no net expenditure on the planning board's part. It's just sort of a temporary borrowing, I guess I would say. A couple of things that I'll kind of preface, as I see Rich has his hand up, and I want to make sure he's got a chance to ask a question or make a comment. I, I'm going to be working with our accounting department to make sure that this is all above board financially and accounting wise. If it's not, then we'll figure something else out. And then the other thing is, is that the timeline of these projects is probably by the end of the year, within a couple of months of, of the new year. And so it's important because I, I don't plan on borrowing significant portions of planning board money at any given time. And also, this isn't a situation where I need money to pull out of an account on June 30th, 2023, so that there would potentially be an effect on the planning board's paying priorities. And so the, the final thing that I'll say is that the planning board's spending priorities trump anything. So again, the planning board decides next meeting that, hey, we want to spend 50,000 bucks on this, then planning board spends 50,000 bucks on this, and then again, we figure something else out. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, this is the most flexible and kind of painless way to deal with this issue. And I wanted to see if, if you guys would, would give me the permission to do this. And I'm happy to, you know, report to the planning board anytime we make one of these moves. You know, when the money goes out, when the money comes back in, absolutely happy to do that. And again, this is all predicated on, you know, our accounting department kind of, you know, giving me the, the okay that with our auditors and whatever. So that's that. Happy to take any questions. So, yeah.
Tim, were you able to talk to Anne Marie, just in regards to this, and if she had any information on what other towns do?
Unfortunately, I was, I was on vacation last week, and then she's on vacation this week. So I, 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 I can tell you this. They, they have money somewhere and they get reimbursed. It's just, so I, I, I don't think it's, it's necessarily like, well, do they spend the planning board money? Or do they spend this money? I, I guess my question is, is, you know, from a kind of budgetary, departmental appropriation perspective, are towns kind of creating pockets of money for themselves for, for reimbursable grant funds? So I think it's, my, my question is less to do with this specific circumstance and more like, how can we be planning for the future, you know, if, if these types of grants are going to be, you know, in play? But, but definitely, you know, once Anne Marie gets back, I'll definitely have a conversation with her about, you know, what, what her advice may be. And, and again, I've been in very close contact with our finance department about this as well.
And these grants are important, so that's very good. Cheryl has her hand up?
Right, you just said something that I was going to say, which is that the grants are important. That anytime that we can receive funds to help advance our, our planning work, that means it's less coming from the town budget, so all the better, right? And while I would be interested to see what the, the new town accountant or that department recommends, whether free cash is something that could be used for that, or if there's some other mechanism. In the meantime, I was tuned into the last Conservation Commission meeting, and I know there was discussion of, of the work related to the dredging already, so work is in progress. And so I'd hate to see that work stopped for lack of being able to pay the consultants' bills, you know, in the interim, until the grant money is received. But Tim, I did have a question. Does the reimbursement come with each invoice, or is it lump sum at the end?
It, it, it comes with each invoice. And so these programs tend to, you know, they don't want to get an invoice every week. But, you know, it's typically, you know, you, we get billed on a monthly basis by, by these vendors. And then, you know, we process that and then get that invoice over. So, yeah, it is, it is a sort of a, of, of invoice, invoice typically on a monthly basis.
And does the turnaround from the granting authority monthly as well?
It's approximately monthly. So we've, we've gotten, you know, between 30 and 45 days. It tends to be the turnaround. I, I like to think that that's a conservative estimate, but, you know, it's not instantaneous. But it's also, you know, again, what, what I, what I don't want to, what I, what I don't want to see and what I don't intend at all is to be in a situation where, you know, we're, you know, scrambling, you know, to, to kind of juggle priorities that the planning board has versus, you know, this. So I, I think, you know, ensuring that quick turnaround, and, and part of that is, is us turning around those invoices as soon as you know, which is something that my department can have to be on top of. But, um, yes, it, it is kind of progressively throughout the length of the contract, not, not kind of lump sum.
And what's the total dollar value of each of these grants?
So the, the, the Seaport Economic Council grant is $75,000. There's also, there's a, there's a match portion that they were able to get in-kind matching funds through that. And then the Mass Trails Grant, Josh, you may be able to pull the specific number off your fingertips. I think it's something around $30,000.
It is, it is. This grant, I think, came out to 32. But there's, there's a little bit of wiggle room there.
All right, so there's, there's twice as much grant money reimbursement as available budget, right? So we can authorize, do we have, have we expended any of our $50,000 budget? Or we should be able to authorize up to the $50,000 amount?
I, I don't, I don't think we've expended anything and, and so, and then, and again, you know, my, this budget stuff is, is something that's like the one, the most unfamiliar part of this job for me, when I took it two years ago. And so I'm very, very, very conscientious of, of keeping track of this stuff. So, so, yeah, you know.
Okay, so I would be supportive of authorizing the use of $50,000 or up to $50,000 for this purpose with the understanding that if there's another pot of money, if you will, elsewhere in town that could serve this purpose, after you speak with Anne Marie or with the accountant, then if there's another source, then that would be my preference. But I, but I am supportive of, at least in the interim, using our funds for this purpose.
Yeah, and, and Cheryl, to that point, I see Maggie has her hand up too, yeah, too. So whether, whether it's reserve fund transfers or what, one thing that we do have is a Milton Landing revolving fund that's actually capitalized by rent proceeds from the yacht club leasing the block up building. I, I don't know what sort of guidelines or strings there are on that. That would actually probably be my number one choice. That's something I have to talk to, to Anne Marie and the accounting department about the sort of specifics of that fund. But I think just the nexus of these projects, that fund really matches up in, in a good way. So that's kind of my first go-to. And so I would kind of look at the planning board budget as more kind of Plan B. But, you know, I just want to make sure I've got all my bases covered before, you know, before you go into it. Maggie?
So in theory, you know, I think I support what you're saying, but I just am a little uncomfortable sort of, you know, voting on something where I feel like we should talk to town accountant and maybe have them write a process, so then we can just review it and then follow it. I, I just wouldn't want to step on anybody's toes and I just feel a little bit uncomfortable because I'm not familiar with this. But in theory, I understand it and support it.
Yes, Sean?
Thanks, Meredith. I, I have a, a question and maybe a different structure to creating some flexibility for you, Tim. What do you anticipate monthly costs to be? Monthly?
Can you, let me, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to look through my emails for the, 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 the scope on these projects, just to kind of get a little bit of a sense. I, I don't have that at my fingertips. I mean, you know, we're talking, you know, probably, I, I don't, I don't want to speculate. So give me, give me a minute and I can, I can get a closer approximation for you on that.
Okay, I, I can complete my, I can complete my thought, which will probably be helpful. I'd be more amenable to making a smaller dollar value available for you. Because once you create the cycle of invoice, you get reimbursed, you, you won't need 50,000. You potentially, I, I'm assuming that you're not going to have a $50,000 invoice, given the numbers that we're talking about on a monthly basis. You may have a $5,000 invoice. So you submit 5,000, you get 5,000 30 to 45 days later. So I don't think there's a need for us to extend, you know, the entire budget. I think we just have to, it, it, what we should consider is extending enough money so you can get the cycle going. Do you follow what I'm saying? Because I, I think if you're, if you're getting billed timely, and this would hold the department accountable for billing to get your reimbursement timely, you know, we, we would expose less of the planning board's budget for the purposes of, of helping you accomplish what you're trying to accomplish. I'm all in favor of helping you accomplish it. I just think you wouldn't need the entire 50,000.
Yeah, Sean, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. And, and, and I think you're absolutely right, you know. So, so what I, what I would say is, you know, if, you know, on a, on a $75,000 project, if, if each invoice is, you know, 10% of the project, that's 7,500 bucks. You know, and, and, and given what my understanding of the potential timeline is, is probably. is probably, probably less than 10 months worth of, you know, worth of work. So I, you know, those invoices may be, may be greater. But, but you're absolutely right. I'll never need that much money at one time, even though the total of those grants, you know, exceeds the $50,000 budget. So, you know, I think, I think at this point, you know, $25,000 is a really conservative kind of figure. You know, again, just because, you know, if, if, if those invoices come back from the state, you know, closer to 45 days as opposed to 30 days, you know, we may be needing to pay, you know, two invoices on one kind of cycle, if you kind of understand what I mean. So I think I would be very comfortable with that. The other thing I'll say is that, you know, our vendors understand kind of the headache of reimbursable grants. You know, so I think they're very, you know, they're willing to be flexible in their invoicing. They understand kind of, you know, that, um, you know, these things are more complicated than just kind of cashing a check. So I'm perfectly happy with, with, with a limit, you know, on this, you know, imposed by the planning board so that, you know, there's absolutely no question that, you know, a significant chunk of the planning board's budgets could be available at any given time. Totally, totally comfortable with that.
And Rich, Rich has his hand up.
Yeah, sorry, I pulled it down before because I think you kind of answered it. I was, my really, my question, and I'll just talk through it. But my question before was going to be, um, asking if you were going to work with accounting to, to, to work through that. You mentioned it, so I pulled my hand out. But, you know, it, this definitely seems like it's new to us on the call. But, you know, grants are not new to this town and I know that we've, we've done them in the past. And so I feel pretty good that, you know, you're going to talk to our town accountant and work through it. My, my real concern was before, and I don't think it's a concern, but it was more using funds, getting money back through a grant, is that, does that grant now have to be used for something? And then how do you pay it back when that, you know, it's, it's now technically for something else, not for the grant, right? And so I'd imagine our accounting group, you know, should, should be able to work with you to figure that out. I don't think I'm worried at all about that because, I mean, the reality is you're not going to extend resources in, in, and the town's money until you know that you've got a grant and you know it's, it's, it's a done deal. And then it's just a matter of filling it out and getting money back. So I don't, I, I don't see the issue, especially since this is not something new to towns nor ours. I'm sure if our accounting department was sitting on the phone, they'd probably explain what, what they would do.
Yeah, so, so Rich, and definitely appreciate that. So I'm, I'm asking for authorization for, for two specific grants that we've already gotten there for studies, you know, so it, so it fits under, under the kind of the account, you know, in the planning board's budget, you know, directly related planning board. So there's no, there's no speculative kind of looking forward of like, hey, you know, I want to have a slush fund that I can kind of dip into for other, for other things. So, so that's, that's that. I, I think, you know, you're, you're kind of talking about something a little bit similar to what Maggie was referring to. And I, I actually personally would probably also feel comfortable having some type of a written, you know, policy, for, for lack of a better term, you know, to work through with accounting. Just so everyone understands, you know, this is how we're going to do these things. I, I would appreciate, I would appreciate the vote tonight. But, but also I am eager to kind of get that clarity for the board so that we all understand what's going on. So we'll get to work on that, you know, as soon as we can, you know, probably first tomorrow. The other thing that I guess, you know, and this is something I may want to talk to some other planners about, you know, looking forward, how do we kind of approach our budget with this type of thing in mind? And maybe this experience with these two grants provides the board a model where it's like, okay, let's, we can do this and, you know, we'll, we'll go into this with this understanding. Or maybe we want to think about, you know, our budget, you know, and not just the planning board, but maybe, you know, the town and the select board, which, which funds by office. So, you know, this is a little bit of a learning experience. I mean, I want to learn more about how other towns kind of do it. And it may just inform our, our kind of budget conversations for fiscal, oh, fiscal '24, already, goodness. So, so yeah, but, um, but I, I think we've all totally valid questions and concerns and requests that I think, you know, we'd be happy to kind of accommodate, so.
Okay. So I think this is great. I think we all, you know, Tim, we understand you're, you're put in a difficult position and we don't want, you know, for this to be difficult for you to, to try to get these grants funded.
Yeah, Meredith, free money is never free. There's always, there's always something.
Exactly, and I do trust that we're going to find, maybe, you know, a simpler process for you maybe to, um, to be able to fund this and, and maybe not directly from the planning board budget. But in the meantime, I think we do need to fund these, um, these reimbursements for invoices.
Tim, in a situation like this, I, I guess as a, as a fiduciary manager within my, my own company, I'm always inclined to approve as little as possible. And I know you said 25, but if it is, if it is a 10-month assignment and it's 7,500 a month, would you be okay with 20,000? And it might, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to nickel and dime anyone. I just think we all have fiduciary responsibility just to extend what we need to extend so you can accomplish what you need to accomplish, but not going to be on that.
That, that works on, no, no presumption of nickeling or diming on this one, so no worries.
And that's for the other members to consider too. I, you know, obviously we all have, we all have to be part of this.
How do the other members feel about a $20,000, um, a vote on that amount for Tim to be?
I, I would be okay with it as long as if Tim feels as if that's impeding his ability to move these things forward, that he'd come back to us and, and request an additional amount.
Yeah, absolutely, fair point.
Because I don't, um, I work as a consultant myself, right? And, you know, I don't like my company being a bank for my clients. And so, um, you know, and probably Maggie and Sean have this experience too. So, you know, having the funds available to pay the consultant, you know, is good for the consultant. It's good, and therefore it's good for us because it allows the consultant to continue to do the work, allocate the resources to this project and not backburner it, you know, for something else where, you know, somebody's able to turn around their invoices more quickly. So I guess, um, you know, I was fine to go with 25,000. I respect your point, Sean, about not doing all of it, all of the 50. But if Tim is okay with 20, um, then with that caveat of him coming back to us, if he feels he needs that to go up, then I'm fine with it.
That, that works for me, so that, that will be fine.
Okay, so are you ready for a motion then, Meredith?
Yes.
I will move that the planning board approve $20,000 of the $50,000 planning and studies budget to go towards initial payment for two grants that the planning department has received with the understanding that the, um, those funds will be reimbursed by the granting authority upon receipt of invoices.
Could I just make a friendly amendment to that?
Sure.
Could we say up to 20,000?
Sure.
Up to 20,000, I don't think it, we may not need to authorize all 20. How does that sound?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Uh, just one last question. This is within the town's business year, right?
Yes, all, each of these contracts expire, well, the, the grants need to be expended by the end of fiscal '23. And the state and the, and the town work on the same fiscal year.
Okay.
I anticipate the work on both of them to be finished closer to the start of the new year and then, then the end of fiscal year.
Okay, great.
All right, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Any further discussion? Okay, with that, a roll call vote. Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, Tim. Keeping us moving, okay. All right, so the next, um, next item on our agenda is planning board committee appointments and MPIC nominations. So we, did everyone, I don't know, I think it was sent out what all of the committees are. Cause I know, you know, those who are new on, um, on the planning board, that there's typically, typically been a representative from the planning board to a number of different committees. I currently serve on a capital improvements committee and the open space and recreation committee. Cheryl serves on the MPIC committee. Rich has been serving on the, is newly appointed to the, um, to the community preservation committee. And I think we also have two other committees, a couple of others. Denny served on the, is it the, it's the, hold on, I'll flip it up. The telecommunicate, the telecom design review committee is also a, a committee. And affordable housing, I believe, Rich, I know you were on that at one time, I believe. And Kathleen, I think, stepped into that position, am I correct?
Correct.
So affordable housing is available. And I am open, if anyone who's new to the board is interested in, um, capital improvements or the open space and recreation committee, I also would be, I'd be happy to do something else. I'm, I'm happy to do whatever other people want to do, so.
Meredith?
Yeah.
I'd be, I'd be happy to take the telecommunications design review committee spot if that's, if that needs a person and it's available.
That's a good move, Sean.
Okay.
I, that, that committee has not met recently. But one thing I will say, I'm, I'm being, I'm being flipped, but they, they haven't actually met because we haven't had a lot of new, um, of these proposals. One thing that I will say is if, if, if the board does want to take up something along the lines of, which we might, might have discussed at previous meetings, small cell, um, telecom facility zoning.
Yeah.
That committee would probably fold it into that. That committee doesn't currently have a role in the review of those projects. We've had one so far and it's been kind of through the select board office. But, but that's something that, you know, if that's something that goes down in the future and we start to see more of those, you know, come down the line, which I think we will, that committee may be more active. So I, I would take a look at the membership and make sure that that's currently up to date, but just to fill in on that.
Okay.
Great.
No, Meredith, I just have a question. So the housing committee, is it the fair housing committee or is it the select board housing committee?
They're, they're currently discussing how to structure that because I think there's, there's currently three different committees. The, I know the housing committee under the select board there specifically, I think that has been discontinued, but.
Yeah, so Meredith, we currently, so you're, you're right. The select board housing committee is no longer operative. So we have the affordable housing trust, which does not have a planning board member on it, as far as I know. And I don't think it's required to have a planning board member. And then the fair housing committee, which is technically still in operation, but we're trying to kind of recharge and reorganize that committee. The fair housing committee would have either a planning board representative or a designee nominated or.
So if I want to be on one of those, which one would I be on?
You would be on the fair housing committee.
The fair housing committee, okay.
I mean, you could, you could conceivably get on the affordable housing trust, but it wouldn't be as a kind of designated planning board member, you know, in, in the same way that the fair housing committee or these other committees would be.
Oh, I'm comfortable on the fair housing committee, if, if that gets revitalized. Because right now, we're not sure if it's going to be revitalized.
Yeah, that's one of the things that we're talking about taking to town meeting. So I'm crossing my fingers for it, but it's not, it's not a done deal until town meeting votes on it.
Okay, so if that comes up, then I would be willing to be on that. But I'd be on, willing to be on anything else to Meredith's, if you want to be, want me to.
That's great. And if I can't make a meeting, you know, I can always let you know, you know, what are the capital improvement committees or the open space? If I can't make it, you could.
Okay.
Um, and then Cheryl, I'm assuming that you would want to stay with, on MPIC as our representative?
I would. In the past, I offered it up when I was chair of both. But I'm in my last year of my second term on the board and, you know, that, um, there's, you know, we're at a point where it's kind of, um, the wind down years of this MPIC. And I feel as if, um, I would like to sort of be able to take it to that point of the recommendation of whether the plan should be updated or not, that the committee's working on. So I feel like it would be a way to kind of tie a bow, if you will, or tidy up kind of the work I've been doing for a while now. So I would appreciate that, yes.
Great. And Rich, I'm assuming we've just nominated you to the community preservation committee and that you would want to stay, stay on that?
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting yet, so.
Okay. Okay, great. Um, okay, perfect. Um, so that leaves, I'll stay on the other two. So great, I think those are all terrific. So, um, maybe I'll make a motion for us to just vote on this. Or do we, I don't know, Tim, do we need to vote on this, our committee assignments? We might not, we sort of all.
Um, so have we, have we gotten, um, I, I think it makes, it makes sense. We've discussed it, it's fresh in everyone's mind. I'll have to double check with the select board office on when the kind of turnover. I think a lot of these have turned over on July 1st, but if they haven't, you know, whenever they do come up, we'll have folks to slot in.
Okay.
Like, I think the CPC one was just voted and just voted by the select board. I've been on vacation, so I haven't gone and get sworn in. So I don't think you'd need to vote that again, because I would imagine nobody else would want to vote that again.
Right, but if we need to vote individuals, we can, yeah. That sounds great, that sounds good. All right, Tim, let us, let us know about that.
Meredith, I think we'll need to let the select board know about the MPIC, right? Since they have a joint appointment.
Yes, and that, and so that is our next item on, for discussion, so that's great. Um, so I did, and I'm going to give you a little update a little bit later, had a great meeting with Arthur Doyle, just sort of going through, you know, what we've been talking about as our goals as a planning board, which we'll talk further about tonight. There, he's going to be speaking, you know, with what they're interested in seeing in town and really what I went through, you know, with our list and things that we can still add to. We were really paralleled in, in the, what the select board, what Arthur said he's interested in and what we're interested in. Again, I'll talk more specifically about that. But we did talk about the process for the, the MPIC nominations. And I had explained to him that Cheryl had given an overview of sort of historically how, how, how the, you know, the process has happened. And with it being that the current members, when their term is up, staff from the, from the town, now being Suzanne Bridges, would reach out to the current board members, find out who would like to stay on MPIC or who is going to be stepping down and, and won't be renewing their, their term. At that time, the, the members would, you know, obviously, if there were vacancies, it would then go, um, it would go, it would be, the planning board would be, would be let known. It would be known who's not renewing, how many vacancies there are, and that we would then evaluate the current board members, you know, that would most likely just be, you know, kept on if they wanted to stay on unless there was a reason. the current Board members, you know, that would most likely just be, you know, kept on if they wanted to stay on, unless there was a reason. And then, um, the volunteer forms that had been submitted would be reviewed, and, um, and those nominations would be made. Those not, those, that slate of, of nominations would then go from the Planning Board to the Select Board. So we would have our own discussion, our own vote, and then we would relay our nominees to the Select Board. And it would be up to them to have their own discussion and their own vote. So that's typically how it's gone, and, and Arthur agreed that that's, that having, keeping that continuity with that process would, would make sense. So, um, so that being said, so we, we did have a, a working group, Maggie and myself, just, you know, just looking, you know, in general, um, you know, could we make the process better, you know, what, what could we do? So we met, and we did have some recommendations, but this, um, the recommendations that, when Tim, Maggie and myself met, are only recommendations. It's, this is completely up for the discussion for the Planning Board, um, and, you know, it's, it's for the full Board to, to make any decision on, on our, on our nominations. In our discussion, and Maggie, feel free to add anything if I'm, if I'm forgetting anything, but we did really feel the continuity is important, um, for the Board. Three people currently who are on MPIC actually were part of the Master Plan Committee originally, Cheryl being one of them, Jerry Burke, um, and Tabor, was Tabor Keely the other third?
Tabor, but it was Dick Burke and Tabor.
Dick Burke, I'm sorry, Dick Burke, um, and, and Tabor. So we felt strongly that, you know, having that continuity, um, and having those, um, and especially since we've just, you know, Cheryl, you've been just, you know, instrumental in the Master Plan, um, implementation, and especially with regards to the overlay zoning, the Milton Village and your experience in what there was, you know, we've discussed, um, that there was a learning curve and that, and there was a lot to be learned and gained, and, and now, taking that information and being able to, to work, um, on the East Milton overlay zoning is, would nice, would be very nice to have that continuity. We also felt, um, that the Select Board had just voted to nominate Roxanne Musto to, to be on as the Select Board's representative to the MPIC, so we felt, um, that, that that's, that continuity should be, um, should, should remain. We did, we actually, what is really wonderful is that we had a lot of volunteer forms for the Master Plan Implementation. I think people really care about the planning that's going to be going on. There's a lot of interest in the MBTA Community Zoning, um, and Neighborhoods, you know, in relation to that. There is also, um, the East Milton, um, overlay zoning, which is also very, very important. So there were, there were actually three candidates that really stood out, um, in, and I can just read some experience levels, and the three, the three other positions that we, that we recommend, um, that are filled. We first, um, John Cohane, um, was, um, one of the recommended, um, applicants. This, as we approach, as we look to the, um, doing overlay zoning in East Milton, we felt strongly in our discussion that it would be, um, it's really important that we're going to have good, that we have a good working relationship and open communication with the East Milton residents, and all residents, of course, in hearing from all voices. But that, um, John is a leader with the, um, East Milton Neighborhood Association, which is a 500-member, um, organization. So that being a significant, a significant means of communication and, and, um, direct line for communication, and again, this will be a public, um, process, you know, and, and all residents, we will want to hear from. John, just as far as, um, background, has it, has, um, in our, a degree in architectural engineering. He's a licensed, um, background is residential construction contractor, um, for 30 years, and now is, um, working assisting building, builders, um, with, to comply with the mass stretch codes. John has lived in Milton for 14 years, um, and he's, you know, he's been a, um, someone who's come and attended a lot of our Planning Board meetings, and I, I think would be able to have a good working relationship, um, with the Planning Board. The second person who we discussed, um, who has an excellent, um, excellent background, um, is Dan Walsh. He has extensive real estate planning and, and sales experience for the past 30 years, as well as financial services background with 15 years' experience with Fidelity Investments. Most recently managed a team of 100 real estate professionals in the Back Bay and South End in Boston, and was frequently asked for input on new developments in historic areas requiring sensitivity to existing neighborhoods, blending old and new together. This is someone who's raised in Milton, um, is very familiar to the trolley, to school, and graduated from Boston College. He's lived in the town for a half-century, from everywhere, from Central Avenue, um, has family on Hinckley Road, Adams Street, 88 Wharf. He currently lives actually on Elliott Street in the Columbine's, right on the MBTA, um, train, uh, trolley line. And he states, "I want to see positive, well-planned, attractive housing and business development in my neighborhood, and would be thrilled to participate." So I think has a strong, not only financial and economics background, but also real estate, um, and understanding of, of development projects. And the third person who we also thought, um, is Demetrius, Demetrius Davis. This, um, gentleman, um, is interesting because he has a general construction knowledge, looking at projects through the eyes of fiscally responsible development, encouraging projects that are beneficial for the town and developer by allowing larger projects while mandating more than expected affordable units, more open space, um, et cetera. And what was appealing about, Demetrius actually goes by Jim Davis, um, for those in the community who might know him. He actually comes with experience because he's been a small business owner in, um, in Milton. And we thought, having a perspective of somebody who's actually been a business owner, um, somebody who understands, you know, when we're looking at, um, projects, that we not only see it from a residential point of view, but also from a business, um, a business point of view. So those were the, the four, um, from the Board, and then, um, three others for a total of seven, and I would be happy to, to open it up. Uh, Maggie, did, is there anything also that you wanted to add? Sorry, from our, but we just weren't, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, when, uh, Tim reached out to say that we were going to meet on this, and, um, any forward, the, the volunteer applications, what I did, I, um, I sort of created a checklist of the things that are important to me, um, as a town resident, that I would be looking for in a volunteer, uh, position on this, um, on this committee. And so I kind of came up with a list of kind of 10 things, so I had in my mind, um, as I looked at the volunteers, like how many of the boxes would be checked. Because we did get, as Meredith said, um, quite a few impressive resumes and application forms. But at the top of my list was, um, you know, how long have they lived in Milton? Um, I wanted to know kind of what type of properties or properties they own. Is it single-family, multifamily, is it commercial properties? Do they own a business in town? Um, that's always kind of really important to me. So basically, I wanted to kind of know how much they're financially invested in the town. Because if you're making zoning suggestions and zoning changes, I kind of feel like you should have some skin in the game. I was kind of interested in knowing kind of what's the likelihood of them remaining in Milton for the long haul, because zoning changes have a long, um, you know, time of being in effect. And so if they're making zoning changes, are they going to be the ones who are going to have to live with the changes along with us as residents? I wanted to know how active they are in their neighborhoods, and, um, kind of what, um, that's important, because I want to know how, what their reach is, um, to discuss with their neighbors what's going on. I also wanted to know how far their reach is in Milton, like what, what is their Milton network? Just outside of their neighborhoods, because they have to be willing to talk to people in every, um, corner of town. And also, are they, they, do they want, are they willing to work with others who have differing opinions? You know, it's what makes a, um, you know, a board and a committee strong is, um, being respectful of everyone's opinions and, um, and not being critical of people when they do have differing opinions. And then lastly, uh, what professional qualifications do they bring? So after looking at, um, all the, the volunteer forms, and then I reviewed and checked all my boxes, I kind of agreed with Meredith, and we sort of came up with a list of those three people, because I feel like they checked most of the boxes. Thanks.
Rich, I think you had your hand up next.
Yes, um, just a few comments, uh, but, so just, you know, to make some Maggie's point. So the last two things you mentioned, I totally agree with, like, you know, I, I really enjoy working with people that are open, you know, to different opinions and working to get to a consensus. I, I don't, not a huge fan of, it's, it's the my way or the highway type of an attitude, because I like to think that everyone has good opinions, and when you kind of get a whole bunch of different opinions in a room, you come up with something even better. The professional qualifications, absolutely agree with. The only thing, I, I have, I have to disagree with two things. The, the, how long you've been in town and how much kind of money you're invested, I think is a slippery slope. You know, everybody in this town, no matter where they work, no matter what their income level is, no matter how much property they own, you know, we all get an equal vote in this town. Like, I, I don't think I, you know, if I have two properties, I shouldn't have a better, like, vote than my neighbor that has one. So I just, that's my opinion, I know everybody has a different opinion, but I just, you know, I, I don't, we, we want to be careful, I'm being that type of town, uh, get you in trouble. I, I do think also, we had talked last time, we talked a lot about, you know, equity, looking outside the normal way of finding folks and seeing if we can find new people to be on these boards. And probably hasn't been long enough since our last meeting for that to have happened. And so hopefully, I, I'm just hoping that I think there is a group or a committee that's being formed, that they can start, you know, helping us with that, because I think that would be very important. I did see a number of the applications that came in. I thought, you know, it was great, you, I don't know how many obligations get into these things all the time, so it's, it's great that there are some people that are interested. I do think, though, that this is a very unique role. This is not a role where people are going to be creating zoning. The zone, th- this is a role, um, to further what Town Meeting has already decided. It would be a new committee to create some new zoning, to bring it to Town Meeting. And so, you know, I, the way I looked at this, these applications that came in, is, you know, who's, who is coming in with that professional qualifications? Who seemingly wants to get their, you know, roll their hands up and deliver what Town Meeting wanted or wants to do? And so the, a number of the applications that came in seemingly had a lot of experience, and, you know, architecture degrees and things like that. I'm not hearing that folks thought those were worth looking at, but I think those would be some that I would be interested in looking at. The other thing I'm a little confused about is how many people we're looking for, because I know we've got, there was like, I don't know, one or two positions open, because there are people on it, and so I'm still not sure, are we looking to pull people off? I think last time we were talking, there was even somebody on the Board that was only there, like four or six months or four or five months. And, you know, I'd want to make sure that, you know, if somebody dedicated or, or decided to come on for four months, we should probably allow them to finish, to do a year at least, before we start looking to pull somebody out. Usually it's for longevity that you start wanting to pull people out. I do like that Cheryl wants to stay on for her last year, I think, you know, she's put a lot of time and effort into it, and she's got a lot of experience, so it'd be great if she, she kind of wraps that up. That was my two cents.
Thank you, Rich. I'll just add, there's a total of seven positions, so everyone is up for renewal, so we are, we're actually looking at, um, you know, a total of seven.
Every, every position is up every year, I think, in these type of roles. But we have people that are either already just joined or have been on it, much like Cheryl. I personally don't want to see an entirely new committee on a committee that's just wrapping up. I think that's disastrous and not the right thing. If folks are looking to create a committee to make some changes in the town that go in a different direction than this one, that's fantastic. But that would be something Town, they would have to bring to Town Meeting to vote on. It's wildly inappropriate to not do what Town Meeting has already voted on. So I'm not in favor of just kicking everybody out and starting over. That just doesn't make sense to me, and it's not what this town has ever done in these committees.
I agree, yeah. Thanks, Rich, that's good. And Cheryl, you had your hand up to speak next?
Yes, um, two things. On the two new seats, the Master Plan Implementation Committee requested two new seats, took that to the Planning Board, to the Select Board, and to Town Meeting, with the explicit purpose of expanding the diversity of the committee. And I mentioned, we wanted to do broad outreach to get to communities that have had less representation on committees and boards in town. I don't think that this vote is ready to go forward, because I don't think there's been adequate outreach to those communities, especially during the summer months, when a lot of people are busy and/or away. And, and maybe even neighborhood associations aren't having their meetings. And so I, I just really, um, feel as if the, the, the nominees, um, need some broader cross-section of representation. And then the second point that I'll make is, I think it's extraordinarily wrong not to nominate Elaine Benson to continue. If we, we are searching for people to serve on committees, they dedicate themselves, they, they make themselves aware, they participate. Elaine is one who has participated in Town Affairs. She's a Town Meeting member. She attended Master Plan Implementation Committee meetings and participated a number of times. She represents a demographic of a young family, a renter. It's important not just who owns property, but who rents and who lives here. It broadens who can live here, is part of the diversification. We, Liz, uh, who was, uh, on the committee previously, represented a young family. And it's very hard to get young family parents to participate in committees, because they meet at hours when they're, need to be with their young families. And so I am absolutely supportive of Elaine. I see that she's attending tonight. I'd like for you to have an opportunity to hear from her. You didn't see an application from her, except that the ones who were on this, uh, Board when she was voted in a few months ago unanimously, and when she was voted in unanimously by the Select Board, uh, I would like for you to hear from her this evening, right now.
Well, actually, Cheryl, I just would like to respond to that, um, first. First of all, I, I hear what you're saying with diversity on the Boards, and it's something actually the Select Board also is, is talking about as well. They're actually putting a committee together to find out how to do that. But, um, these terms were up in July, we're actually already late. The Select Board is going forward with, with all of their nominations and all of their, all of their, we have to keep government moving, and we have to fill our Board positions, we, we can't, we, we need to follow the Boards, the Select Boards.
So may, may I just say, Meredith, that this committee has been a five-person committee for seven years since it was formed. I don't think we're going to be, uh, hurt by not having two new members for another month or two, if that's what it takes to, to reach the goal that the committee set. You know, and you supported, this Board supported the goal of that committee, and.
Correct.
And I, I don't think it sends a good message to volunteers who serve on our committees when they're not getting the support of the appointed board for the things that they just voted a month or two ago to agree to. I, I just think it's a very poor message.
So town meeting was actually voted um, to increase the number to seven and what the terms would be. We're, we're, we're simply filling the positions that town meeting voted. Um, it's spring town meeting to increase the number to seven. We always should be making out, uh, making the best outreach we can for diversity. I, I, I couldn't agree more with that. Um, but we need to fill the positions that we, we currently have and we have seven, a seven-member um, board to fill. So I, I absolutely agree. Let's continue doing outreach. I think this is something, again, the select board is talking about how to do that, um, you know, more effectively than we have been. Um, so through the public process, you know, as, as, as much as we can do of that, but we, I think we're, we're already, um, we should have taken this vote in, in June or early July, so we're, we're late on doing that. Um, and the second-
The committee meeting monthly, we haven't lost any time.
That's, well, we're, our job is to review on all, all uh, you know, all current members as well and reappoint for the next year. And I do want to respond because I, I absolutely respect um, your opinion, Cheryl. But um, without going into great detail, um, I just want to make a statement that it is unfortunate to have anyone come before the board acting hostile and making personal accusations of planning board members. And most importantly, making derogatory comments of other residents. Um, the derogatory comments about statements made by other residents. We may not always agree, but our boards must be respectful to one another. And we are entering into a time where the planning board and the MPIC committee are going to work very closely together. And work together in what I see as being a positive working relationship where we set a tone going into um, working with East Milton on their overlay zoning. And that it is imperative, absolutely imperative, that we, we begin this process in a, in a positive, respectful manner. And not um, and not having anyone who comes with a hostile attitude or anyone who would be disrespectful. It, it's just-
Who are you employing has a, has a hostile attitude, Mary?
I'm not going to go into detail, but I'll say that the March meetings are, are public, so it is, feel free to go back and take a look. Um, but there were many accusations that were made and, and personal um, and comments about other residents' comments, so um, with that said, I'm not going to say anymore, but um, but I really do want this to be a, a um, a positive working relationship with the master plan implementation committee and um, and, and with the overlay, with the zoning that we will be doing, um, and, you know, all of our next steps, so that's all I have to say.
I would, um, given that you've just given you and Maggie's recommendations and you were all just given the um, full slate of candidates, I would like to postpone this vote. Um, I would like time to consider all the candidates. I'd like time um, for Elaine Benson to resubmit her application. Um, I don't think it's appropriate for her to have to do it, but you didn't look at it. Others, Sean and, and Rich haven't seen it. Rich probably saw it when we first appointed. Uh, Sean hasn't seen it. And so it's uh, you're, you're doing a selection process that's not complete by uh, eliminating her without having the same benefit of consideration. And um, and I will go back and review the March. But if you want to take a look at um, people who make derogatory comments, um, you know, I've had plenty of derogatory comments made against me over the years that I've been on this board. I mean, it comes with public service, unfortunately. And um, I find it really unfortunate. I've said any number of times that we should be able to disagree respectfully. And um, and I try and show that same respect to everyone I work with. Um, but I expect that in return too. And that um, you know, I've seen things um, said about me in social media that people have shared. And, you know, it hasn't prevented me from doing my job. And I, I, I think that we have to be really clear about what um, the committee, the master planning implementation committee is charged with, what is charged is, what the um, qualifications of the members are in total, because it's a combination that gives you the total. Um, and I do um, respect and thank you for appreciating that their continuity is important. Um, I, I think um, that those um, that those who have been on have, have all contributed. And um, and it, it's a cross-section of people that makes the um, the committee work. And um, we've done a lot because we have, it takes a lot of time. And one of the things I noticed in the applications, they're not even all using the same application. You know, um, the architect has a different application than some of the others. And he indicates that he's available to three or four times a month. You know, our committee currently meets once a month, but there's a fair amount of work that's done in between the meetings. It would be good to know what availability everyone has, that everyone uses the same form. Um, and so um, uh, I'd ask for you to recon, uh, for everybody on this board to reconsider your, or to consider what I've said with respect to your recommendation. And have time to think about it and postpone a vote, at least until our next meeting.
Just to be honest, I just did, I don't have much more to say, just, you know, I, I, I I think I like the idea of postponing a bit, just till the next meeting, only because I, so I feel like, I mean, I've, you know, was on the warrant committee for eleven, five, for six years and this now, this is my fifth year. I, I don't know that anybody could say I've been, I've ever been disrespectful to folks. I, I think I'm pretty respectful. However, there has been times that I have asked um, folks uh, calling in to, to kind of be careful in the way they say things because I think, you know, some things that people can say, things in cruel ways. Or you can say things that you don't think is hurtful to folks, but, you know, I just mentioned a minute ago, I, and Maggie, this is not directed at you, but like, there are a lot of people that feel that, you know, we should be weighing how long people have lived in the town or how much they have invested in the town money-wise. I think those are really dangerous uh, things to qualifiers for, for boards in this town. Um, really dangerous qualifiers. And if, if, if the people that you've bought or put together right now, those are some of the qualifiers of them. I, I mean, you, you, if you have free votes, you're welcome to take it. I won't vote on it because I think it's, it's not the way that you fill positions. I think there's a lot of people in this town that would be pretty up in arms to hear that, you know, their neighbor that has a bigger house has a bigger say than them. Um, and I, and I'd like to, what I'd like to do is take a look at and hear from folks that have been on the MPIC and understand, like, what, what is the job left over the next year or so? What types of roles do you need and what types of backgrounds would be helpful? And I think that's in lieu of not, you know, coming in with a, a, a great amount. Well, I think we should do that anyway. And to your point, Cheryl, if we could get some diversity on it, under those guidelines too, that would be wonderful. Um, I can appreciate, Meredith, what you said, it takes time. And I think there's a committee looking at it, so maybe that's next year, maybe it's the year afterwards. I really hope we get better at that as a town. Um, but I want to make sure we're picking what we need for this town, not because we just think that they have more say. I, I just, yeah, I'm, I'm just, I, I, I don't want to take a vote on this, so that's up to you folks.
Uh, Sean, you have your hand up. Thanks, Rich.
You're on mute, Cheryl.
Geez, I was good too. Let's see if I can remember what I said. Um, I just want to speak for a minute to this um, particular topic of how long someone has been in town and what that might mean. Um, when I consider who's on this board here, uh, one of the reasons I feel that the contribution of every member of this board is as valuable and as significant as it is is because of the time that you've all been in town. And uh, I, I think your ability to, you know, see the town and to envision the town, uh, and to know the town, um, and to, you know, debate the issues of the town are uh, really supported by the fact that you've been around for a long time. And I think that's true for everybody. Uh, so, you know, I'm, I'm talking to this particular topic only. The, the, the value that someone brings, um, who's been around the town for a long time, I think, is very, very good. And uh, you know, if a person, um, a person who's been around town for a long time and, and likely are committed to being here for a very, very long time, they're a, they're a, forget about their financial investment. I, I, it doesn't matter to me what their financial investment is, whether they live in a small house, a big house, an expensive house, a least expensive house, an apartment, but they've vested and um, I think they're, they're usually uh, someone that can bring something to any board that's very valuable for the board to hear.
Just to follow up, Sean, I, I could, I can appreciate that. I mean, so, you know, like others, I've, I've been in the town forty-five years. Um, I feel that way at times, but I will also say, you know, as I was on the warrant committee, Brian Walsh had mentioned, uh, you know, when he was bringing somebody on, bringing me on, I said, how do you determine? And he said, I want to get a good mix of people that have been here a long time, people with financial degree in, you know, backgrounds, all sorts of people, young people, old people, people from this side of town, that side of town. And I really appreciated that. And I will tell you, when I started on that board, me being here forty-five years, I felt I, I know, and I know the right way. But I will tell you, and I agree, and I didn't always agree with folks, but there were some folks that had just moved to the town. And what I will say I appreciated about folks that just moved here was they looked at things very differently than I did sometimes. And it made me question some things, alter a little bit. Maybe I have my principles, but like, it wasn't a bad thing, in my opinion, right? Now, do I want to see the, the, the warrant committee be entirely made up of people that just moved in? Probably not, because I, I do agree with some of the things you just said. Um, but when you have a good mix, right, if you've got seven members, it's not a bad thing to have somebody that just moved in, right? Maybe they're going to come from a different town, a similar town, a different town. Heck, maybe nobody ever agrees with them, but maybe they bring some perspective. That's the way I look at it, but I kind of, like, I agree with you, the way you said it because yeah, you don't want seven members that just moved in that have no history, right? Because that helps. It's always great to have people on these boards that have some history of why things have been done. Um, but it's also great to have, that's why it's great to have an architect, it's great to have a real estate person, it's great to have people, somebody that was here forty-five years or somebody that was here ten days. And then you all get together and you hammer things out. I guess that's my point. So I'm not really disagreeing with you, I'm more saying, let's be real, let's think about who's on the board currently and let's think about what the needs are. Like, if all of a sudden we find out that the board is made up with, Cheryl's an architect and there's six members that are all real estate agents, I'm kind of thinking we, we need to change, no offense, Meredith, to real estate agents, but maybe we need a few more people that bring some more perspective. And if you've got, you know, Cheryl on there with six people that have been here forty-five years, well, maybe one person should probably be new. That's the way I'm looking at it.
And Rich, that is the way I looked at it, is we do want a variety of skill sets. Um, and that is what, what the recommendation is, is a variety of those skill sets. Um, when you look at everyone who's currently on the board, um, we do have an architect, general construction, um, different, only one, you know, there's one real estate person, um, an architectural engineer is the third. That was, I was really looking at the diversity um, in, in, in having to meet the needs of, of what we need to do and accomplish um, in implementing the master plan. Um, I, I, Cheryl has said often, you know, it's great to have younger, you know, different voices, younger people. Um, and I don't have an, I don't, I would never have an issue with that, but, but this implementing the town's master plan, I don't think we should have someone who's just moved to Milton implementing the town's master plan. I, I just don't think-
I just, I disagree, Meredith, and let me just give you a little bit of, of reason why. Um, you know, I was new to town at one point, you know, and I, I got involved and volunteered my time. And, you know, people move in and out of towns all the time. Uh, I didn't grow up anywhere near here. I lived in a lot of places before I moved here. I bring all of that to my perspective, which, you know, you and others may like or dislike or agree or disagree with some of that, but it broadens the dialogue. And, you know, as far, you haven't heard, you haven't spoken to, you haven't attended meetings and heard um, Elaine, for example, and what her background is and what she's done. She's a young person who moved here and she's volunteered a ton of her time. Why does that make her less eligible for a position on a committee than someone else? You know, and why is ownership, you know, make someone, these are things that make us less inviting as a community. And it's really something that's very disappointing to me. You know, I feel like a community should be welcoming to, to people and welcoming them into the um, being active in the town affairs. And the master plan itself, you know, it's about the future and young people and new residents are about the future. It's not about the people who are about to set um, off into retirement and maybe be spending half their time somewhere else. You know, it's, some people were fortunate enough to, to be born and stay in the community, this community, one community, their entire life. Other people, you know, it's, it's a choice they made to move here. And we want to make it an attractive choice. If we say you don't count because, to serve on and be involved in town affairs because you didn't, you weren't born here, you haven't lived here young, long enough, or you don't own property here, that's exclusionary. And it, it's, it's not appropriate to be exclusionary that way. It's a slippery slope, as Rich said. And again, I'm going to recommend that this not be voted on tonight.
Cheryl, I, you know, I, I agree and that is not at all even a basis for, for my wanting to, you know, to make the certain recommendations that I did. But as we've said, the, the master plan has been written. Um, this is the implementation of a plan that, that is already, already in place. Um, but I think having an understanding of the different neighborhoods, different, the nuances of the community of the town is really helpful um, to, you know, to doing overlay zoning in East Milton or looking at MBTA zoning. I think having a real in-depth understanding um, on, on top of having the skill sets that, that are just are necessary and are what are described in what the town meeting passed um, for the master plan implementation, so. Um, and I think, I think deferring this, I think putting this off, I think, you know, we're already, we're already delayed in, in taking action on this. We put it off for two meetings because Cheryl, I really did want you to be part of this conversation and you weren't able to attend um, two meetings ago and then we ended up canceling. So I think these are all really good things that we should be talking about um, and having this conversation, but I, I would like to see us move to a vote tonight. And Sean?
Uh, I just want to respond to Cheryl and there's plenty of things that I agree with, uh, that I agree with Cheryl on. This is one that I don't necessarily agree, uh, and I, and I, I feel obligated to express my point of view. I think for something like a master planning effort, having experience and having be, being around town, I don't believe at all it's an appropriate role for someone who has moved to town recently. And, and I don't know how recent or how much experience somebody should have, but, you know, I, I take from your comment that if somebody just arrived in Milton, they should just as much be a candidate for a role on the master planning uh, effort as someone who has been there for a long time. I, I just don't agree, so I uh, can't see that.
I'm just going to mention that it's not developing the plan. Remember, this committee is about implementing a plan that was already developed and adopted. Um, so it's not generating a plan. It's, it's a follow-up committee.
I just agreed, and I understand that, and I, and I still believe that implementation of the plan requires uh, knowledge of the town, experience being in the town. Uh, I, I just don't think a recent arrival in the town puts a person in the best position to be an implementer of the plan. I don't think I'm going to-
I guess we'll agree to disagree.
I was just going to say, I'm not going to convince you and you're not going to convince me, so let's save some time.
Uh, Maggie, you had your hand up and Rich?
Yes, um, I just wanted to clarify that I never said I took into account what size somebody's house or property was. I said, one of the boxes that I was interested in knowing was what type of property. Was it a si- single family? Was it a si- single family? Was it a multi-family? Was it a commercial space? Um and do they own their own business? I um I was fortunate to be born here. I did move away for a period of time. I, the only way I was able to buy a house in Milton when I was thirty-six years old was by purchasing a two-family in High Park and then renting in Milton while I collected some uh rental money. And so I li- have lived on Blue Hill Parkway when I was first married, and my kids were born in on Blue Hill Parkway. I love Blue Hill Parkway, I went to Tucker School, I loved that neighborhood. After college, I rented an apartment on West Street, um which runs between Blue Hill Parkway and Elliot Street. I am no way um in support of um of excluding anybody from volunteering. I think there are so many great volunteer um opportunities at every level. And I started volunteering when my kids were at Cunningham. But I think you have to volunteer to get to know the town before just jumping in into important decision-making roles. Um this committee in particular is about long-term planning and integrating the history into the future. And I think you have to have an understanding of the history of the town. And I've always said, one of the great parts of Milton and why I chose to return and why, you know, I struggled um to buy my first house here, and then I struggled to keep it. And I had to sell it a few years ago and downsize because I couldn't afford to keep it. But it was, it's the people of Milton that um are so special and so supportive. And so I feel like we owe all our residents. It's our obligation to 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 help them and plan and help for the future. And the only way we can do that is sometimes it's looking to the past. And um I want, I don't mean to exclude anybody, and then that list was a long list and not every candidate checked every box, but it was just a lens through which I looked. And um I think some of you took it the wrong way, so I feel badly if people took it the wrong way. Um because that was not my intent. But I do think it's an important committee, and I do think having a broad outreach to different parts of Milton is really important.
Right, and Rich?
Yeah, just a quick one. Um and and I I guess echo you, Sean, I'm like, not looking to change any opinions. Yeah, um and and to be honest with you, I get, like, Sean, some of the comments you made, I I absolutely see where you're coming from, and I don't disagree with them. I think the way I'm looking at things is, I I kind of think I'm checking those boxes, but just in a little bit of a slightly different way. Like I mentioned, some of these committees, like, I wouldn't want to see a seven-member MBIC committee with people that maybe I wouldn't want to see one that had everybody that just, you know, bought their house last week. Because maybe they're gonna come, and I'm saying maybe because there are people that absolutely have lived here forty-five plus years that probably have nothing, no idea what goes on in town politics. Um but there are also people that might have moved here last week that could have spent thirty years in town politics in another town. And it could be bringing something, you know, to the to the party. And 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 there's a host of reasons why, you know, having a good round board with different varying, you know, people that have been here longer, shorter, this degree, that degree, you know, different perspectives. I really like that because, you know, the reality is, if we have somebody, one person joining that just moved in last week, they're not gonna ha- they're not gonna change any votes, right? There, it's still going to be a consensus on these committees. And I look at different sense of opinions as a good thing that'll just, you know, add more context or more things for people to to weigh. And the reality is, you know, there's a lot of young people moving to this town. There is far more younger people moving to the town than people like me that have been here forty-five years. And, you know, if they all voted, they could probably take over all these committees committees and and bounce us all out. But I think some of those folks that are moving to the town bring a lot of good opinions. And, you know, I'd love to see us start listening to some things. I mean, I live in East Milton, there, you know, I feel like we're under attack for years. And believe me, I'm nervous. Um but I'm one of those folks that look at East Milton as I I don't want to say no to everything, because then we're gonna get the worst of it all. We've gotta find, you know, people to help us get somewhere, and so so it is a good so we have a good future here in East Milton. I've invested in East Milton. Yeah, and and Maggie, to your point, I I wasn't trying to condemn anything you were saying, it's just, you know, people, like, it does matter, like, what we say, how we say. And it wasn't really directed at you, but like, I'm thinking in past conversations, it may even be one of the conversations that Meredith talks about um in the past. I mean, I've had people call, heard people call and say some pretty awful things to this board in the past. And I've been floored by what folks have been allowed to say. Um and just keep saying and keep saying, one person after the other. Um so we, I I mean, I'm hopeful that that doesn't happen again, and our chairs never do that again. And so, yeah, I I again, I I hope, I would like to see us push this off, because quite honestly, I don't know what the makeup of the board is today. I don't know what their qualifications currently are. I know you just listed a couple. Um I don't know that every, everybody on this call that's voting has all that information, how long everybody's been there, what they've all, you know, you know, what they bring to the party, and what all the, you know, we've heard a few people that have have submitted applications, but I saw a lot more than that, and I saw some people that have lived in this town a long time and have a lot of, you know, experience, but they weren't mentioned. And I'm curious as to why. Um I'll be, I'll be honest, I I've submitted my name to um committees and boards and have not, uh committees and not got phone calls back, and I was very much qualified. And, you know, folks would like, probably like to know why, hey, somebody that just got on is more, is less qualified than me. And so, you know, I might have to mention it to somebody at the supermarket tomorrow, why we did what we did, and I don't know the answers.
Cheryl, could you just describe, you know, talk about the current members um on the board currently?
To mention something, uh first, I'll, I will do that, but first I want to mention something. One of the candidates that you've put forward in your recommendation also also recently was hostile to me at a recent MBIC meeting uh at the outset of the meeting, and I would be uncomfortable with that person uh because that person um chose to be very hostile in the comment that that person made. And we can elaborate on that at another time if you'd like, but I do want to put that forward. As far as, uh and you could go watch the tape from probably two meetings ago, or maybe three. As far as Tabor Keely, uh Tabor is a a real estate um broker um in commercial uh side, um he's the town's representative to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. He's also um, I believe, a board member of the the Ponset River Watershed Association. Um and he was on the uh the Master Plan Committee. You know, twenty, with me, twenty thirteen, fourteen, and fifty. Dick Burke, uh and and I don't know where he was born and where he lived and how long he's lived here, okay, Tabor. Except I do think he raises uh children here. Dick Burke, uh I believe, is a lifelong resident. I don't know, so let me go back in terms of Tabor, his children are grown adults, well into adulthood. Same with Dick, um probably, uh Dick's a grandfather, I know. Tabor lives on Brushell Road, I believe. Not certain where Dick lives. Dick has, he served um as the MBIC's representative. Uh he currently serves as the MBIC representative on this Select Boards Boston Landing Committee. He served on the Traffic Mitigation Committee. I I believe he uh is a banker by trade. And has been involved in town affairs, um and was on the original Master Plan Committee. So those are the two. Elaine works for a commercial real estate development company. She has a lot of project management experience. She served on the CP, uh CPA committee, so the Community Preservation Act committee, committee. Um I met her then, we were volunteering at the same time and doing the work to help get that passed. She's a town meeting member. Uh Dick and Tabor are not town meeting members. I believe she'd been involved in other volunteer activities, but I don't know the details of them all. She lives in East Milton Square in a two-family. You know me. I believe you know Roxanne, so I don't know what else to add there. So, you know, one of the things, um you know, I I mentioned Liz, before Liz, there was a gentleman, Michael Ball, and Michael was very much interested in housing, and in particular, senior housing. Elaine is also interested in housing and diversification of the housing stock. Housing is one of the major components of a of our master plan, of any master plan is required to be. We know that the state is challenged with housing right now. Every community is challenged with how to provide enough housing for our our regional economy to continue to thrive. And so having somebody interested in housing is really important. I was very interested in one of the applicants who um who whose life work is in housing. He has to be an architect, but his focus is in housing. You know, and as I said to you, my work, um at least the last ten years, has been focused in housing, wealthy family housing, in my own office. Um and so I I see um the importance of housing, but open space, you know, and recreation space is another component of the master plan. Uh traffic and um and alternative modes of transportation is another, that's another big chunk of the master plan. Municipal facilities is another big chunk of the master plan. Again, we're not redesigning the master plan, we're making sure it's being implemented. There's follow-up steps in it. And, you know, having uh someone who knows somebody somewhere who can make a phone call and help facilitate getting information about something is valuable. You know, it's not about saying this is a good plan or this is a bad plan. That's not our role. Our role is to see that the plan is moving forward, all right? And, you know, as a planning board, um the planning board adopted this plan, and the planning board put forth the article to town meeting years ago to form this implementation committee so that this plan would move forward. Emily Innis, who used to be on the planning board, chaired the Master Plan Committee. It was a large committee, it was diverse. It had people who had lived here a long time and had people who lived here less than a long time. And it had people with different interests, and that was what was important. Historic preservation and preservation of the community was another, is another important aspect of it. So, um
We're we're approaching ten o'clock, we still have a lot more on the agenda. And if I, Sean, if you, did you have one more comment, if you, or you had your hand up, I didn't know.
And I I just learned that Dick Burke lives on Pleasant Street, so I'll add that. And for those of you who don't know, I live on Canton Avenue near the high school, so in terms of where we all live.
It's all good, it's all great, yeah. Sean, did you have something else to add, or no? So I just want to just say that we are really lucky, we have so many great candidates. And Rich, to to your point, um we have many more candidates than we have positions. So that we just can't simply, you know, we simply can't have everybody on. And this is a really good thing. I am, you know, I couldn't be more pleased that we have such good candidates to choose from. And anyone who is um who's not nominated um certainly will remain on the list and and future, you know, any future openings will will definitely be considered. But it's it's, this is all very good, and um and we're fortunate to, I think, to be in this the position to have so many um applications for, to come forward. Um we are moving forward with the Milton um overlay zoning. One of the things tonight is the RFP to be discussed. Things are moving forward quickly with MBTA, um you know, what we're gonna be talking about with that. Um I think we really need to have a master plan implementation committee that's that's ready to jump on board um and and work with the planning board committee. So um I just would put it out there to the members, um would anyone like to make a motion to to vote on this? Oh, and I'm sorry, you know what? Elaine had her hand up, so I I would like to give Elaine the opportunity to speak. If we can let Elaine Benson in.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, welcome.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Before um I ask a few questions, I just wanted to say I'm not really sure um who you were alluding to, or talking about hostility or anything in past meetings in March, but I did just want to say that if that by chance was myself, you know, I certainly apologize if anything that that I ever said was ever, ever offensive um any to any of the members, this is certainly the first that I've heard of it, so. But the question that I had was, and there's a few, it's just, um I want to know why it's helpful to know in making choices of committee members, what type of housing that they reside in in terms of single family versus multifamily. I also wanted to know how long that members would consider appropriate to live somewhere in order to serve on a committee or specifically the Master Plan Implementation Committee. You know, I myself have only been here five years, but I I don't think that that's not a lot of time. Certainly, it's not forty-five, but um, you know, I grew up on the North Shore, and at any rate, I I'm just curious. And then I'm also wondering if, you know, in in the beginning of this this conversation, it was brought up that the pass process was to kind of ask current members and see the age of their interest um and whether they'd like to continue for the next year, and if not, you know, then look at other people who are interested. And if that process is being changed, then I want to know why current members were not made aware so that we could have resubmitted our applications and that you would have had a full picture of the qualifications of everybody that's interested to be on the committee. I can share, thank you, Cheryl, for the, for um, you know, sharing a little bit of, even I can say, since, you know, my my qualifications were brought up, that you know, I've I've been a longtime manager of over thirty employees, I have significant experience in project management and operations. I work for a commercial real estate firm. I'm a board member of Sustainable Milton, I'm a town meeting member, I serve on the Personnel Board. I worked on the East Milton Working Group that helped to steer the Judy Barrett Report. I'm in a group now that's working closely with CHAPA and our town planner on an affordable housing in Milton. I've also attended a lot of meetings, um Planning Board, Master Plan, uh Warrant Committee. I'm very involved, I have children in the schools, um and so that's a little bit about myself. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Elaine. Uh Rich, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, just for what it's worth, because I um I just wanted to make sure I'm not coming off as you need to be here in town for forty-five years. I think five years is a long time to live in a place, and the amount of time somebody invests in learning about a town is is wildly different. I can assure you, when I was five years old, I couldn't care less what was going on in the town above kindergarten. It wasn't until I was in my later years here in town that I actually got more involved, and that was the last eleven years. Before that, I was not a town meeting member. And so, you know, I I definitely don't put my time in town worth more than my neighbors that have been here last.
Thanks, Rich. Any other further discussion, or? Any other comments? Okay, um so I guess just um.
So I would like to make a motion to accept um the nomination of the three new members that we discussed.
And the reappointment of the other four members as well, that currently are, sir.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Meredith, which, which, which four members? Can you make that clear for the motion so we've got that in the minutes?
Sure, that would be Cheryl Taggias, Dick Burke, Tabor Keely, and Roxanne Musto.
Isn't there more seats than that?
For the, for those, for the, for the four. And then it would be Demetrius Davis, John Cohane, and Dan Walsh.
So I would say that, you know, you put two weeks of time, and I think showed disrespect. You didn't even make an effort to answer Elaine Benson's questions about process and qualifications. You didn't consider her application. And for two weeks, when this could be voted on in two weeks, when everyone could review her application, I think it's absolutely wrong. It shows poor process, and it makes me question, you know, really what the purpose of this working group was. It was totally different purpose than my understanding was, and maybe I need to go back and watch the tape again. But I thought this part, that your working group was to talk about, not talk about candidates, but talk about a process by which these joint appointments were going to be made. And if I had known it was going to be what you're doing tonight, I would have definitely volunteered to participate with this. I'm the one on this board who has served on this committee for seven years. I served on the master plan committee itself for two years before that. I served on the warrant committee before that for four years. I've got a ton of time investment in this, and I think what you're doing is showing a lot of disrespect.
I would have, so yes, we did not feel like it was, and, you know, in speaking with Arthur, that we don't need to, current members should not need to reapply and fill out new applications. You know, continuity is good.
But then you didn't even know the qualifications of the people that you just nominated. Do you ask me to tell you what they were?
No, I was.
The wrong process.
Excuse me, Cheryl. This was, this was, Rich had asked about that, so I just was asking you to give that information so Rich could, could hear that.
What working group was this?
This was, this was what we had discussed at our last meeting, that we would just have a process for reviewing, reviewing actually the process for MPIC nomination nominees, speaking to Arthur Doyle. And then to review, to do sort of the legwork, like any other working group that we'll get to tonight, because I have some other ideas.
Who was in the working group?
Maggie, myself, and Tim.
Okay, yeah. This isn't going to affect the vote, right? But I, I'm going to have to watch the meeting as well, because I was not under the impression that you folks were going to be vetting, because I would have absolutely wanted to be part of that as well. I thought what you're doing was working on process. You guys talked a lot in that meeting about equity and making sure that we're finding and reaching the right people. But, but today we haven't talked about, basically all you said was that there wasn't enough time for it. And so, yeah, I mean, if there was a working group that was going to make decisions on who we were going to nominate.
No, no one was making decisions, Rich, and that's, that's what's important, and that's why all the applications were sent.
You just did. You made three recommendations in the decision.
A recommendation, and then we discussed it. So, and that's why everyone, all the applications were sent to everybody for review, so if there was somebody who you felt strongly that you would, you know, that you would like to recommend.
That, that's why, it sounds very much like a meeting to determine something, which even if it was just two people, that sounds like, like a violation of open meeting law. So, I mean, I'm just, I gotta go back and watch the video. If we gave you the direction to go determine, then that's one thing. I didn't realize that. But if you guys went back under the guise of deciding process, but then came back with three, here is who they are, and we're not going to tell you about anybody else, I mean, that's a completely different story.
No, it's on, it's on the tape. I.
All right, I'll watch it.
To make sure I was there, and, and that's why we all have a vote tonight. This is all, you know.
Yeah, but again, you're supposed to be making those decisions and conversations are supposed to be in public view, and that was not.
This is recommendation, and then we're publicly.
Then I would like to talk about the other candidates, because they have not been talked about, what their qualifications are. Since you talked about them outside of this meeting and we haven't talked about it, I'd like that to be done tonight or next, at our next meeting. You're talking about process, Meredith, and you're rushing this process in a way, and you had a meeting outside where you talked about qualifications. I, this just really, I'm going to encourage a lot of people to watch this meeting afterwards and really look and think about process and see if they think that this was a good process.
Cheryl, I would welcome you to talk about any of the candidates that you, that's what we're here to do, is to any of the other applications that you think would.
And then I think we should put them up on the board, and we should, if Maggie has a sheet that she wants to check boxes, that, that should be a sheet that's available for every candidate and should have been sent to each of us in advance of this meeting. We have not had a dialogue about all of the candidates. And, and you know, it's presented to us, we didn't, I had no idea what you were planning to do about current members, about what, what this board felt about my continued participation on this. I could have advised outside a little bit to give some background to everybody. You know, you didn't ask me to give a briefing about it to the whole board, you know, I just. I don't like this process.
Well, the problem is we have a lot of really good candidates, and I just, again, I, I.
Don't know who they are.
If I, if I could for a minute, if I could just, for a minute, we did talk about this in the last meeting, and this was entrusted to Tim, to Meredith and Maggie.
Tim, is there vision on vetting out who we were going to vote on? No, it wasn't.
It, well, to, to bring the candidates back for a vote, that's the way I understood it.
We were talking about process, and we were talking about equity and making sure, there was, there was a large discussion about that. And I'm fine, and I totally agree, that that committee's not around yet, that, that probably shouldn't have been on the docket for talking about it. But I mean, the reality is, we're not even the ones that just vote these people in. The select board has to also vote them in. And so, so I don't know, the select board's probably going to watch this, and are any of them going to feel comfortable voting? I don't know. I mean, that's for them to decide, but I would, I would have to imagine they're not going to vote.
And I will say, I probably will attend their board meeting when they talk, when they have this agenda item on it.
I don't think it's our job to condition the select board, nor is it their job to condition us, so.
Well, it's a joint, well, according to what we were planning here was we were, Meredith and Maggie went to sit and talk to their chair. And so it is about us working together, because that's, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I didn't see the point at the beginning. It's why I was one of the ones that said I don't need to be there to sit there and talk about process. I thought that there was also going to be some conversation about what's important for, you know, this, I mean, it's August, August 11th. We're almost halfway through, and so, I mean, we've got to at some point decide what, what's important for us to even work on this year.
Sorry. Meredith, if I may say one more thing. I just recently served on the Town Administrator Screening Committee, and we were given a number of resumes that were submitted for that position. And we were given a, sort of a grading sheet, if you would, or if you will, of the candidates. And we were asked to, you know, read the candidates against sort of the criteria that was being sought and make a shortlist of who should be interviewed. And then from there, after those interviews, a shortlist to be sent to the select board. And, you know, it was a process outlined in advance. It was very clear, and it worked really well. And we could benefit from an improved process. The process in the past, I felt worked fine. We have these two new, my anticipation was we would fill the two new seats after doing some broad outreach to meet, you know. You know, at this point, I regret that the MPIC brought forth an article to expand the committee, because I think that this is becoming politicized in a way it shouldn't be. This is a committee that's worked well for, for seven years. And, you know, that you stated in one point that you don't want to put someone forward because you feel as if some comments were hostile. I just told you that somebody that you nominated was hostile to me at a recent meeting, and you don't care to go back and look at the tape. You don't care to wait two weeks to make a vote on this. I find that disrespectful. Again, I just wanted to reiterate that.
So you, was there anyone else? I mean, I, all of the forms were sent. So if there was somebody you wanted to talk about, Cheryl, I certainly want for anyone to feel like they can talk about any, any of the nominees or applicants, the volunteers.
Well, my feeling is that we were going to talk about all of them. I think it shows respect to all of the candidates. And if we're going to select one person of those who's already on the committee to not go forward, you know, I think there has to be a discussion about why that would be. And, you know, why that person's qualifications mean that they should be booted off for someone else who had either different qualifications. Why, why would that happen? So, you know, as far as someone who chairs this committee for so long, it's important to have someone who participates, who attends the meetings, who does follow-up, you know, we do work between meetings. People who can do that work can come back to the committee. For example, Elaine recently took these spreadsheets that we, that we started years ago, did work to improve the way the spreadsheet works. She sent it around to everybody between meetings. You know, it's that kind of can-do, jump in, see where the need is and help out, that's valuable to the committee. We don't have, you know, we, in the past, we solicited, of course, funding so we can hire consultants to do certain work. I told you, you all are familiar with it, I personally did a lot of work in Milton Village. And I think I said to the committee at the time, I cannot do this amount of work on this committee in the future. You know, we need a lot of people hands-on, and that's why we wanted to expand the committee too. So, you know, understanding what people's availability is is really important. What they think they can do based on what needs to be done at this point in the process. I don't have any sense of that. I think what we could do is put a list together, some questions of the candidates, and ask them, you know, about some of these things, and then we would have a, I would, as chair, have a better idea of who I might think is going to be able to make the best contributions to the committee. I don't feel like I have that at the moment.
All right, Cheryl, I, you know, I'm, I'm hearing what, what you're saying and feeling like you need more time. Rich, I'm hearing you want to hear, make sure, you know, that you can review all the candidates. What I, I know Maggie has a comment, but what I would like to maybe make a suggestion is that we look at the current MPIC committee nominees, I mean, the current members that are on the board, and vote on those people, so at least we can have those people sworn in, because that's already, we're already late on that. Let's take the current members, and then let's defer the review of the additional openings for a future meeting, where everybody feels like they can look at all the new applicants. I, I want this to be completely fair, completely transparent, and have everybody be able to, to review the application forms. And, and then we can make a decision on who, who, you know, who we feel would, you know, make or fulfill the, the committee as best, as best we can. So if you all would like to do that, we can do that.
Can I just ask a question? So my question is, how are all the other committees assigned? So I watch many selectmen's meetings, and the way that I have understood it, the process, and I know it's being reviewed now, but when, when notification goes out to the public and people respond, there's usually a deadline for a response. And then there's a working group within the selectmen or somewhere where they discuss the members or the people who volunteered or filled out the volunteer, and then they come up with their list. I don't ever recall seeing a full discussion, except for the Town Administrator Steering Committee recently, there was a discussion on that. But for most committees in the past, I don't really think that they have a full discussion on every single person who filled out every form. And again, I don't watch every single meeting, so I could be wrong on some of those.
Meredith, sorry, can I just jump in and answer that? My understanding is that, and we were told this at the time that the MPIC was talking about filling those seats, is that that had been done erroneously in the past, and that these did need to, these discussions did need to take place, these applications. So the select board recently doing it, it's because it's been a recent advice given to the board. So, and that was relayed to me, related to the MPIC. We had to actually rediscuss and re-vote before, for that purpose, just to answer that question.
Yeah, so maybe I can appreciate that, but honestly, it would make every meeting really, really long if every committee had to discuss publicly everybody's qualifications. And honestly, when I applied for the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, they didn't discuss my application publicly, and I was not appointed. And, which is fine, you know, I get it, I can't, you can't be on everything. But honestly, I think I had a lot of qualifications over some other people. And just even more recently, with the warrant committee, and I think I mentioned this at our last meeting, many of the warrant committee members had been on it for three years. They wanted to be on it for at least another two, because that was some of the customary policies that were afforded to some members. But as I understand it, and this is not a knock on the moderator, but he didn't even notify the members that they were not being reappointed until 10 minutes before the new members were notified. So yes, to your point, it seems like the process has been broken somewhere along the way. I do think if you look back at our July 14th meeting, I was, I did not jump up and answer Meredith's request right away. It was kind of a long period of time before I said I would be willing to be on this committee with her. It really gave every member of the planning board an opportunity to speak up, and then I spoke up. And so that was on the July, July, at the July 14th meeting. And then we didn't have a call. I got an email from Tim the next week, seeing if I was available to have a call on Monday, the 25th. I was away on vacation with my family, but I thought that this was an important meeting to take and an important call to take, because we were already into July. I know that we have East Milton coming up. I know the RFP was, has been on our agenda. I felt that this was an important decision to make. So I took time away from my family and my vacation to have a call with Meredith and Tim. And then I took time throughout my vacation to go through my checklist and to really think about who I, who I thought would be great. It wasn't something that we just decided on a whim, and it wasn't, it wasn't not a rushed decision. It was a very thoughtful process. And I never met with Arthur Doyle. Meredith met with Arthur Doyle as chairs of their respective committees. I just had a phone conversation with Meredith and Tim, and. and I just thought this is an important committee. I didn't mean to hijack it and cause all this controversy. I don't know why this has caused such controversy. Of all the committees in town, I'm not sure why. But I think that I was very thoughtful in my reasoning. I think I'm a very thoughtful person and I wouldn't rush a decision. I am comfortable with my decision. I'm sorry if anybody's feelings are hurt because they were not chosen. I've been on the receiving end of not being chosen, so I understand it. I've been on the receiving end of not nice comments. And I understand that too, both publicly and personally and on social media. I'm comfortable moving ahead, but with Meredith as our chair, I'll follow her lead. Whatever you want, Meredith, I will support.
Just a couple of comments. So I think every board, and I'll give my opinion on answering what you said, Maggie. But this is just obviously directed at everybody. My opinion is every board does have a little bit of a different way of doing things. You brought it up, so I'll mention the moderator. I personally didn't like that, you know, he kicked everybody off the first time or, you know, did things, you know, so abruptly. I think it's very hard, especially in the warranty. I've been on the warrant committee when there was not 15 members. For a bunch of years, we could not find people to be on the committee. We begged people to be on the committee. They didn't want to be on the committee. And so I think it's, it's, it's hard when somebody takes a lot of their time and gives it to the town, regardless of what their politics is or their stance. I mean, Cheryl, not to call you out, but I mean, we've been on the boards for a long time together. There's been many a times we have not, that we have not agreed, right? I absolutely value Cheryl's opinion either way. And you know, I appreciate people that have different opinions from me. I will just, I'll say two comments now. One, I don't, I got an email yesterday with a list of candidate applications. Not enough time for me to vet that. I don't recall ever being on this board. This is my last year, but I have not been on the board when we've ever created a committee to make any decisions. We just don't do that, in my opinion, because we are an elected body. So we don't create, we create committees to go vet things, bring them back short or listen to something and come back.
And that's all we did, Rich. This is, that's, this is not, we're voting tonight on what you want to do. No one has made a decision, so I just want to clarify that.
You sent me partial applications yesterday. I saw them today. And now you're giving me opinion on a three people. But quite honestly, Elaine, I know you're on, I don't know Elaine Benson very well. I have not worked with her, but I do feel like there is, so my answer to why this is different is I personally feel like there's some attacks. I've not seen besides the moderator say, you're all off, that you all have to reapply for your job. It seems very inappropriate and weird to me. I don't know why we're not just filling two positions and, you know, you take, hey, you've been on four years, maybe we'll find somebody else. And you have conversations with people to say, hey, you know, we don't like you, you've not been on. Is very nerve wracking to me. And so that's why I guess my answer would be, I'm holding back a little because quite honestly, I got the email yesterday. So for folks watching this, I have not vetted anybody out. And no, I, no offense, I don't, not, I value all of your opinions, but I was voted on, just voted in, just like you folks were. And so I absolutely want to do my due diligence and hear what you thought about all the people, not just three. And so again, if you want to vote this in, go right ahead. I think it's wildly inappropriate. I think it's a little bit inappropriate to attack folks and say, we just want you off. And so we're gonna wipe out the committee and just bring on a few and, you know, now we'll do it one by one so we can get who we want on. It's just, this is a weird process. Normally, Maggie, I think I would have said, I agree 100% with you and let's move forward. But I feel like what we're saying to some of our neighbors is you're not good enough and we're gonna take somebody else in your place. I have a problem with that.
So Rich, just to clarify, I think what we're saying is we are, or I would recommend maybe to hold off on all the applicants. Make sure everybody has a chance to review all the new volunteer forms. I want everyone to have that time and to come forth and have that discussion with who they would like to see. This was a recommendation only. But what I do, but, and so I'm willing to renominate, you know, the members who we think should be renominated. But what I will say is there's a code of conduct that we have and, and not to make anything uncomfortable, but when that, when that line has been crossed a number of times and I won't go into detail, but it's, there's a code of conduct and an expectation because our boards have to work together in a really positive way. So with that, I would like to, I would be happy to, we could either take the current members and vote on them individually. Maybe that's perhaps the best way to handle this. And would we like to, you know, make our reappointments to the current board this evening? So that they can be sworn in.
Meredith, did you get affirmative from Suzanne that the current members replied that they were interested, replied to her email that they were interested in renewing?
Yes, everyone, she did say everyone would like to stay on, that whoever would, you know, I think the current members were willing to serve.
So I'm not familiar with the committee member who's currently serving and has expressed interest in continuing to serve, being voted off. I view that as being different. And being voted off not for having done anything inappropriate while serving on that committee. I view that completely differently as somebody's volunteered to serve on a committee that they haven't served on before and not getting selected for that. And so, you know, my recommendation is to vote the entire slate of existing members in for another year. And then to handle the new, two new seats separately, which is always the way I anticipated this would go because that's the way it's, the process has worked in the past. In terms of moving forward, the planning board has never had extensive discussion about that in past years. I don't know why it's taken an interest in doing so this year. As I said, you know, I've been at this a long time and the select board has always has viewed this the same way. And, you know, I've worked with a number of different past chairs of the select board on this process and a number of different chairs on the, on the planning board on this process. So I'm not comfortable with voting it one by one. And I'd rather see the full slate move forward.
I'm comfortable voting one by one, to be honest with you. You know, I sort of feel like there's been a change in people wanting to get engaged. Everyone has mentioned that there's been years when we didn't have volunteers to fill these positions. And now all of a sudden we do, and I think that's fantastic. I think it shows that we do have someone in town or on social media, someone's doing a great job in outreach. Because all of a sudden, we have 18 people applying to the warrant committee. All of a sudden, we have people applying to all these other committees. The MPIC is one. The community preservation, I think, had multiple. So someone is doing a great job in outreach because so many people want to volunteer. And I think it's time to hear new voices. Just because you have been on a committee for five or six or seven or eight years, I don't necessarily think that's a good thing. To Cheryl's point earlier about new people moving into town and bringing a fresh perspective, the same thing happened with our committees in town. There are, just the other day, we got a new application and he's a totally qualified candidate. He's been in town for a very long time and has served on all sorts of committees and he has a wealth of experience. But my point in one of the checkboxes on my check was, was a new voice, a new perspective. And I kind of feel like that's what Cheryl, you were saying. And so I don't feel comfortable voting everybody as a slate. I think everybody should put their applications in and see what happens. I don't think that there's anything wrong with the three people that we nominated. I think they're fantastic. Just as all of the candidates are fantastic. So I would prefer nominating one by one.
Is that a motion?
Sure, that's a motion.
Does anyone else would like to do it that way or?
I'd second that motion. I don't understand why we would ever vote for any group as a slate. I think we all were evaluated as individuals to be in the positions that we're in. And I think that's the only way to evaluate anybody for any position in town. So I am absolutely in favor of evaluating individuals on their own merits, not as a, not as a slate or as a group. I don't think that we're, I don't think we're doing what we should do. If we have the responsibility that we're talking about, then we should evaluate each person individually.
I'm confused. I thought it sounded like, Meredith, you folks wanted to vote some of people in as a slate.
I think it's easier, Rich, yeah.
I'm just confused now, Sean, like.
I know, I'm sorry. I'm trying to keep it simple.
I will say this, every single person that's on this committee at one point was evaluated on their own merits and were voted in by this board and the select board. So everybody that is already on the board has went through the process and has been putting in their time. And so I wouldn't, like, I'm not totally opposed to, like, devoting everybody in, you know, or more people in the chunk. Because what I wouldn't want to do is say, and no offense, but if two people walked away and said, hey, we think these three candidates or five candidates are fantastic. What you've been hearing me say the last hour is, I won't vote them as a slate because I don't even know who they are. I don't even know what the candidates were. What I was hoping to see is, like, I got it yesterday. I wanted to read them. I want to see them. I want to understand. And then absolutely, I want to hear from Meredith and Maggie what their thoughts were. And then I can make my own thoughts and we can make a decision together.
So, Rich, yes.
Because this has become quite confusing.
I know. So we're gonna put off the new members, Rich. We're not, the new volunteer forms.
I understand that.
This is strictly, we have to renominate the current members on the board.
No, I know. I was just trying to, so what I thought I heard a couple of people say is, let's vote a few of them in as like a, I'll say slate because we're using that word. And then I heard Cheryl say, well, I'd like one more person to be on that slate. And then I heard Sean say, I don't want to vote any, like a slate. And so we've got three different ideas here.
I don't, I don't think we have three different ideas. I think there's some confusion here in terms of how things have been stated. At one point, I thought I heard Cheryl say, let's evaluate the entire group one by one. Now, maybe since we're in our fourth hour, I misunderstood what Cheryl was saying. So compared to, compared to voting the entire group as a slate, I would prefer to go by individual. But the process that was outlined, Rich, which I supported what Tim, Meredith and Maggie had for the identified candidates, I am, I am okay if we're the three that have been proposed. I'm prepared to vote on those three. But if it's the entire group and Cheryl wants to go back and go one by one and evaluate each person individually, I'm good with that.
I don't want to vote on the new seats because I don't feel as if we all have had adequate time to review and discuss all of the candidates. I never anticipated that only two people would discuss and review all of the candidates and then make a recommendation on a vote the same meeting. And we haven't had a meeting since, except for the short meeting where we voted on the decision for woke upwards. We haven't had a meeting of this board since that last discussion. And so since my, I would have been comfortable with going forward with the same process that's been used in past years, which is if people are interested and the MPIC supports those people. And I can tell you that everybody on the committee would support each other being, going forward. Then that would be an easy vote. It would have taken five minutes. But because there's an interest in booting one person off, it has led to this long discussion. And so.
So let's vote, Cheryl.
The one person being asked or being suggested be booted off has been given an opportunity really to have their qualifications evaluated, if that's the process by which people want to make a decision. So I'm questioning the process by which that decision of that one person is being, is being made. Because as Rich said, this person was voted in unanimously several months ago by this board and the select board. There's been nothing to say that that person now is no longer qualified to be on this committee. It's like, if there was some problem with this candidate in the, has something changed in the last three or four months that have all of a sudden changed this candidate? You know, I don't think so. So it's just, it makes me wonder why there's this interest. And if Meredith says it has something to do with hostile comments, I'd like the opportunity to go back and and watch the tapes from March and see where the hostile comments were because I think she was voted in after March. I think she was probably voted in.
Anyway, it was following. So what I would like to do, because Cheryl, you need to have a committee that is going to be able to be meeting until this is, the other volunteers we can wait on, but there are five.
I did ask about this before and the committee is serving until there's new appointments. There's no lack of committee and lack of work of the committee.
The term ended, the term was through the end of July, so.
But I've been told that the members serve until the new members are appointed. And so that, unless that, you have some other advice that you've been giving. So I did inquire about that because I was wondering whether I should, I could even schedule a meeting for July and August. And, you know, we did have a meeting in July and we have, we have one sort of on the books, if you will, for a week from Monday. But like, how do you plan for your agenda if you don't even know what the committee, whether you have a committee? So that's why I asked about it. So it's my understanding. And Tim, can you provide any clarity on that?
Cheryl, I think your assessment is correct. It's not like July 1 rolls around and the committee blows up. We frequently have, you know, committees where appointments are made, you know, not necessarily, you know, in the timeliest way. There's, I think you're right, is the bottom line. So yeah.
So I'm, I'm trying to keep this as simple as possible. I think we can go ahead and vote on the current MPIC board to, whether to nominate or not to nominate on an individual basis. We will defer on, we should let everybody have the opportunity to review all volunteer forms. So I would like to make a motion to make nomination on the current, current existing board and defer the additional members until later time.
As individuals, Meredith?
Yes. And at least we will have that, so.
So I second that. Or do I need to make that motion?
You would make that motion.
So I make a motion to vote, to vote on individual members of the existing MPIC committee. of the existing MPIC committee.
Are we voting for process or are we voting for appointment?
Appoint, this, these are the appointments. This is, I, this is being made more complicated than it needs to be. We, the, the current board members. And then we're going to wait till everyone has a chance to review all applications for new volunteer forms.
Okay.
And are we proposing to vote on current board members tonight?
Yes.
What was your motion, Maggie?
Vote on individual members.
So we would vote Cheryl, obviously, to re-nominate, you know, to re-nominate Cheryl Taguas. And then we will make a roll call. So, you know, and make a decision.
Okay, I mean, it's not my preferred method, but we need to move on.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, and, and I will, as I said, I will go to the select board meeting and speak to them about this process. And Meredith, I'm curious, when did you speak to Arthur about this process?
We met two weeks ago, I guess.
Because I actually spoke to Arthur yesterday and, uh, and he didn't, I asked him, what's your process? Uh, and if you, uh, if you and Meredith had a chance to talk about it, I, I, I got the sense that you hadn't had any lengthy conversation about it yet.
Yeah, I told him that we would take the vote tonight and then we would let them know who the, you know, who we decided to nominate, so.
But that means you've decided a process, you've decided the process is we vote first and send them a slate.
That's the way we've always done, that's the way it's been done, according to what you said, that how.
But I also said we reappoint the people who are interested in being reappointed. So you. But not all.
Maybe we just need to take a break from this conversation.
That's why I suggested waiting two weeks. The committee is not going to be hurt by waiting two weeks.
If that's what everybody wants to do, that.
So, so my question is, does MPIC have a meeting scheduled before our meeting?
I can postpone it. It's right now, it's not like, um, noticed or anything. We just had penciled it in our calendars for a week from Monday. We normally meet once a month, third Monday of the month. So, you know, we looked at the calendar, we said that's the next time it is. That's all. So, and we make sure there's a quorum, you know, people who are going to be able to come then. And, um, you know, we're working on the spreadsheet, so people aren't working individually on the spreadsheets. Um, so, you know, I would like to have people follow up on the work that they've been doing, you know? I mean, that's the reality is that everybody's got an assignment for the next meeting. So anyway, you know, that's why, my assumption is that we're serving until we're, until the new appointments are made. Is that's why I've been proceeding, I asked about it earlier, when this was coming up for.
Yeah, now I've been following, I've attended both the, the meeting, the one in June that inadvertently was held on Juneteenth and then yet the next one, the next month. So I've been attending them, following, following pretty close attention to it. Um, so I, I do feel like that's why I felt like we needed to nominate the new members. Because I do think that we need to, um, move forward.
Yeah, the one issue is, you know, we're going to be losing time actually if you're taking somebody off. And the reason is that person's been working on their assignment. Now, we lose that person's effort on that assignment and we'll get a new person who has to start over with, completely unfamiliar with the assignment. I'm going to have to go back and do my whole review of where we are, what the spreadsheets are, what we do, what the person did in the past. That position that Elaine was following up on, what Liz was following up on, so she was getting up to speed on what Liz was doing. You know, it's, we will lose the, all of that work.
I know, and, and I, I hate to belabor this conversation, but that's unfortunately how committees work and how new employees work.
Easy to say, I, the work of this committee, sorry, but, you know. There's a lot of work in this that's done in this committee and I think, you know, it's easy to come in late in the process and, and say, well, that's just the way it is, you know, when I'm charged with delivering something for Fall Town Meeting every port. If I don't, you know, you know, it, I'm the one who's got him.
Luckily, it's December fifth.
Excuse me?
Luckily, it's December fifth.
Meet once a month is still not that long, Maggie.
So the only reason that I think we should vote on the current members, um, and these are Arthur's words even, not mine, but that basically, we, we're not looking to take people off committees unless there is a reason, and there is a reason. And I will have this discussion with you offline, but, um, it, it is, there is, there is a significant reason.
And then I would like to have a discussion with you offline about the hostility that I expressed. So, you know, I, I again, see, there's no loss here in, in two weeks. So we, we've all batted this around a long time. As you said, it's almost eleven o'clock and there's things on the agenda we haven't discussed yet. And it's not going to hurt things for two weeks. I, I don't understand this. Projects two weeks without a problem. The community that I chair, you're telling me I can't lose two weeks, you know, I mean, it, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, so to.
Let's just move on.
Let's just, let's defer this to our next meeting then. So, um, and I'm not sure if we're going to have a meeting August twenty fifth. We've got the twenty fourth with our design guidelines. So, um, this looks like it, it may be, um, it may be September eighth. So that should be enough time for everybody to review every form, which we really want everybody to do. So, okay, with that, moving on to the next agenda item.
Being the time it is, can you talk about what you want, expect to get through tonight? Because I, I, I can already tell you I won't be able to stay on for.
I know, I know. You know what? There's a list of goals and objectives of the planning board that I, I think we should be, you know, fresh in going through with our discussion, so I'm going to defer that. Um, what I did want to, um, move forward on, because it's something that's been asked of us. Did everybody receive the email, um, on the resolution, um, by the Conservation Commission regarding scenic road signage? So if you did not, um, I can read this to you and, um, just one second, I will pull this up. It was, it came today late, um. But I, it had been sent a while ago, so I apologize. But this is, um, so as you know, um, we have scenic, we have a scenic road bylaw, um, in Milton that we've adopted. And, um, it prevents people from just taking down stone walls or removing trees without going through the planning board, um, and getting comment from the Historical Commission. What we've found is, um, frequently, and it's, it's accidental and it's not intentional, but that people don't know, they may clear cut a, a woodlot all the way to the stone wall and then find out that those trees were on town property. So in order to avoid, um, avoid this, the Conservation Commission suggests, um, that we do something with, with, um, scenic, um, roadway signage to let people know. And this does not have, we're not deciding this tonight, but this is what, um, we've been asked by the Conservation Commission, um, if we would consider supporting. Scenic Road Designation Resolution, which would be the following. Resolved that the appropriate town body or bodies identify by signage any road in the town of Milton designated as a scenic road under the bylaws of the town of Milton. The commission thanks you for your consideration of this resolution and requests your support for implementing the goals of the resolution. Best regards, John Kiernan. So I would make a recommendation that we would support this resolution. Um, and I believe the select board, um, is also going to be taking this up, um, for a vote to support, um, doing some sort of, um, appropriate signage, um, to be determined in the future and help, um, to implement, uh, scenic roadway signage. Is there any comment or any other thoughts on this?
Meredith, I, I'm in support of, um, I am in support of supporting this resolution. I, I, I just think there's some details to be worked out on it, you know? What, where would the science be? What would the frequency of the signs be, depending on how long the road is? I mean, there's a bunch of details that need to be sorted through, but I, 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 I do feel, um, I am in support of the resolution.
And that's all, simply at this point, obviously, there are a lot of other details to be discussed. And we would probably be working the planning board, um, with the select board, GPW, you know, in, in making sure it's the right signage, so to be determined later.
And working with, um, the neighborhood associations. Because I know, um, my street hillside is a scenic way. And, um, I know that the Hillside Neighborhood Association probably would want to weigh in, so.
Great point, great point. Okay.
So just a question, yeah, so, so just talking logistics, though, when is this for? This, would this be for which town meeting?
Well, the resolution, um, yeah, that we, this would, this would, um, lead to an eventual, probably a town meeting would need to approve this, obviously, yes.
Is there, no, but have they decided, like, are they trying to get it or?
Well, you know, it might not, I, I'm not, you know, I shouldn't specifically say, I think we would need to talk to the select board. I'm doing, you know, in the sign review committee, um, on the process, if it would, if a scenic road designation would, would need to go through, um, because it's already, they're already designated as scenic roadways. And the town has adopted those. This is simply the signage recognizing that. So I'm not, I'm not completely sure if, if, um, if that would go through town meeting, because those are scenic roadways, so.
Yeah, and again, I'm just, I'm just reading it now, so I'm, I, 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 I don't think I have an opinion on it just yet. Only because it, I mean, it looks like they sent a paragraph over July first and I, I don't know what's behind it. Like, how would it, like, to your, to all of your points, a lot of other work has to be done. I mean, it, like, on the most basic level, it sounds great, but the reality is, it's not all the time great because I've seen them go in and neighbors get upset on the types of signs they could put in or, you know, where they get put in. And so, you know, I mean, see, I, I guess I don't know what.
Yeah.
They're asking for support, but we didn't get any information, so.
Well, I think that's yet to be determined. I think we're not anywhere near that level of detail, so I, I hear what you're saying. Um, Tim sent out a couple of examples of what other towns do, but I think there's a lot more research. And I think you're right, we want neighborhood input, we want, you know.
But I'm confused though, because it also says that on June twenty eighth, Milton Conservation Commission unanimously passed the resolution appearing below. So this is, as far as they are concerned, it reads as it's a done deal. And they're asking for our support. So I don't really know, like, I, I agree with you that there's a lot more work, but it doesn't seem that this email says that there's a lot more. So how do we support something that we think there's a lot of work?
Well, if my, if I'm interpreting this correctly, the Conservation Commission cannot do this alone. They, they created a resolution for a, a need that they see and they're asking the planning board if we would support it. The details will have to be worked out, but this is just simply a matter. Do you agree that signage, you know, should be installed on the scenic roads?
Yeah, I, I mean, just, again, well, I mean, for what it's worth, my, my answer would be it would depend on a whole lot of things.
Cheryl?
No, I think, um, I support the idea that you want people to be aware of the regulation about scenic roads. I'm not sure the signage will do it actually. You know, um, I was reading in another community, they have like, it's almost like, you know, like you're a new homeowner and you get like the good, the welcome to town packet. But it's like, if you do get that when you're in a historic district or when you're in a, if you have something that applies to your property that you should be aware of, that's regulatory. So it doesn't have to be like, you know, so if you want to do, you know, you, congratulations, you bought a home on a scenic road or in a historic district, you know, and if you'd like more information about that, you know, here's where it is on the website or, you know, something like that, because that's probably going to be more effective than, you know, how frequently are you going to be putting a sign? Like, if I think about Canton Ave, um, for example, it's a scenic road, like, how many signs does it take? And what does that mean to like the homeowner who maybe just bought the house and, you know, they see that sign and, oh, they say, great, I live on a scenic road, you know, they don't know that they have to go in and apply if they're going to apply for driveway permit or something. Anyway, it's just, um, and it shouldn't just, I think, can think of it in the context of not just this unique road. Uh, but, you know, other things, like, I think, um, some people probably have, uh, property that's under Conservation Commission jurisdiction, uh, because they're close to the creek or other body, you know, things like that. So anyway, that's just my two cents about it. I'm not sure how effective the signage will be.
Tim, you would.
Yeah, just, I, I, I just wanted to kind of share my screen real quick, just so we can kind of see. Um, I, I've been in contact with, um, with folks in Situate and in Norwell or Norwood, one of the Nor towns, um, who have done a similar thing to what, what I think the Conservation Commission is getting at. And if I can just real quick do this, this is kind of what it looks like. So when we talk about signage, it's the street signage, so it would be Canton Ave, you know, scenic road with that kind of special street sign. So I, I think too, I, I don't know if it was Sean or, or someone else that kind of mentioned, you know, what's the number of signs that we're talking about? I, my, my presumption, and I can kind of follow up on this, is that, um, you know, you would want to have the signage the, the length of the scenic road, so that, you know, wherever you're interacting with Canton Ave, um, you know, you understand that it's a scenic road. Um, and then I think to, to Maggie's comment about, um, you know, consultation and, 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 and kind of input from, from neighborhood associations, I, I kind of think that, we would want to have a consistent signage throughout the town. Um, and so, you know, that, that kind of, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood input, input may not be as, as useful in a case like this where if we're going to do something, it's got to be townwide. I mean, Canton Ave goes from north to south, Adam Street goes from east to west. Um, you know, you've got to have consistent street signage. Um, and so, you know, there would have to be an evaluation of, you know, how many signs are we actually talking about here? Um, you know, on all the scenic roads that we have. One other, um, one other thing that, that is of, of interest is I, I think Situate um, was able to fund this project through Community Preservation Act funds. Um, I, I forget if it's the historic bucket or the open space bucket, um, but they were able to sort of make that, that pitch um, and, and fund that project that way. But this is the kind of thing that we're talking, we're not talking about like sort of standalone signs that say this is, I mean, we could conceivably do that. Um, you know, that's something that maybe we want to follow up with the Conservation Commission on. Um, but this is the type of thing that other towns in the Commonwealth are doing.
That was helpful, because when I was thinking scenic roadways and starting to think of, you know, you just entered the granite area or you've entered Scotswoods and I'm thinking those types of signs, so that's helpful. Tim, um, I don't want to speak for anybody, but I'm going to steal Maggie, your comments. I agreed with what you said. But I'll say the reason why I agree with them is, and I don't know if this is where you were going, right, we're elected bodies. We, people, uh, folk members of the board, and we probably want to know what our neighbors think when we have a position on something. And normally we have, you know, we elicit, we post things, we ask people to come in and talk and give record, their thoughts, we weigh them in to what we think. And so while part of me is just like, that's a really cool picture, why wouldn't we do that? Well, there is still a cost to the town and the town has a lot of cost issues, right, you know, money issues, right? And so is this the thing? But the reality is, this isn't our decision, right? They're just looking for support and we don't vote on this. So I don't mean to make it a big deal about the vote. It's just, I, like, my opinions are kind of like what Maggie was saying, but my, and I'm saying them because I have no idea what my neighbors think of this. And so I don't think I could have an opinion on it.
And I like that sign and all, but it really doesn't tell you what it means. You know, what, what is a scenic way? So I, I feel like each neighborhood needs a Carol Stalker who goes around and knocks on everybody's, um, door when they buy a house and she lets them know about all. And she um lets them know about all sorts of great things that's going on in our neighborhood. But I I I feel, you know, and I'm lucky to live on a scenic road, but I do feel like if someone's moving in, they don't quite understand what that would mean.
Well, I think there's 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 probably uh more than one mechanism for trying to protect our scenic roads. Um it it's 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 probably useful that the town send a mailing to any person that lives on a scenic road. So they get something, they get a notice from the town that, please be aware, you are a resident on a scenic road. Um that that I think is is part of of a process that might help us protect the scenic roads. I don't think the signage is a is a is a crazy idea at all. It's as simple as taking down, taking off, um you know, the hillside street sign that's out there and replacing it with a different hill street sign, hillside street sign that says, you know, this is a scenic road. I I I don't even, to be honest with you, I wouldn't even envision talking to neighbors about this. I think that that some of the things that happen in the town have to happen in the town without soliciting how people feel about, uh you know, a road sign. Um if if we're gonna get to that level of engagement, I just think it's a little bit beyond what, you know, what's probably functional. And I don't think that that's something that people would have great objections to, but that's uh my opinion.
That makes a lot of sense. I I mean, I just, it, Tim, I mean, like, why are we, why are we even talking about, like, this has nothing to do with us?
Well, I think the email that Tim sent to us indicated that there was a, there was an area, uh a a residence that was um was reworked uh and and unknowingly, the resident um you know, changed what they shouldn't have changed with an scenic road environment.
It was actually by Milton Healthcare, there was an entire stone wall that the conservation had to come, were called into. We were called in to go see it, Rich, I don't know if you remember, it's.
No, I do.
Hundred Brush Hill Road, and and we constantly are having to deal with.
It's pretty benign, though, the penalty, right? Isn't it like, like a slap on the wrist if you do it?
They have to rebuild that, they have to rebuild, they're rebuilding the stone wall um and replacing some trees that they took down. In that case, um they they've offered to do that because it was accidental. The idea is to, a- and I think it's multi- multifaceted, that we just try to get out in front. Um you know, whether it's a, an article in the Milton Times with a map of the scenic roadways in town and what the bylaw is, um you know, what it prevent, the process and and the way somebody should um proceed if they want to take down a stone wall. So this is, this is just, it's a part of a way to to educate um the community. Tim, you had another comment?
Oh, sorry, that was a leftover hand raise, sorry.
Yeah, all this makes sense, I just, I don't, like, it doesn't really have anything to do with that board, though.
So do we, um, does anyone want to take a vote to support this, or do we want to not take a vote? Why don't we defer this to our next meeting? Everyone think about it, um, you know, it's it's um.
Can I ask, Meredith, can I ask a question of our members? Do do you, um, I mean, to defer to the next meeting, if we don't have any more details and details of what's gonna satisfy everybody, there's no sense in 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 anticipating that we could vote on it if we don't have any more. If if uh, do we feel we need more details on this to even to even be able to vote on it?
I don't know, how how does the other, the rest of the members feel?
I guess I I'm curious of why um they, I understand the concern that they're trying to address. I'm curious if they thought about other mechanisms to address the concern other than signs. So if you could find out whether they had any other discussion. And then, um, Tim, is there any way you can send out to the list service that you have of other planners? Like, you know, do they have this kind of document that I was talking about? I know some communities they have what they call a development guide, but this would be a little bit different than that. But, you know, it could be something that go- goes out as a mailer, you know, when tax bills go out or um, you know, when property changes hands, some uh the assess, I don't know. You know, the assessor's office or something, you know, to alert people. Um I mean, that particular case, I think there's more of an institutional owner. And, you know, that, there's not as many owners like that, you know, where the properties change hands. But we've had other instances where builders buy a property, they don't know that it's a scenic road, right? So somehow, it seems to me, a property transfer is a good time to let people know. Or a mailing to everybody, you know, periodically, and a mailing to everybody who's on a scenic road, you know? Just like, by the way, you know, reminder, I I just think, i- if there's something that other communities have done because, you know, scenic road um bylaws exist in other communities as well.
Do they, do they quote this stuff, Meredith, like, on MLS, when people are buying a house, doesn't it, shouldn't it say right there? This house is on a scenic roadway? Because that would be the time that if I'm buying a house, that I'm, you know, I should know. Because quite honestly, if I buy a house, my real estate agent doesn't tell me, nobody tells me, I buy it, I have no idea if it's happening. And I go and do something, and then you come to me and say, hey, you shouldn't have, because there's this little, you know, this actually is a scenic roadway. Like, yeah, I I get your point, you could maybe, it'd be nice to have a a street sign, but, you know, the reality is, those street signs are only in certain areas. There was like one or two.
Yeah, I I do agree uh with what Cheryl said and um mailing. Uh whether it's, whether it's an annual mailing that goes to the residents, or maybe it's something that goes with their tax bill or something that goes in a formal way that feels like a notice, at least at that point, you would always have informed the resident. Uh relying on their their reading of a sign and interpreting a sign is is a little, a little risky. So anyhow, I I I just, may- maybe, Meredith, what would be helpful if the conservation, if if a little conversation with them could take place, because um there might be, I don't know if it's less expensive or more expensive to install signs throughout the scenic roads or to send a mailing out, which would be more effective. I I would say this, I I certainly, I am definitely in favor of doing something. You know, I'm absolutely in favor of doing something. I don't know if we need something more comprehensive than just signs to be able to feel like we're gonna be effective.
Right. All right, I'll follow up and try to get some more information on that too then, and um. And we can discuss on, you know, how to be most effective, so um, that's great. So we will hold off on the vote on that. Um and then, Tim, I, it's 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 late, but I just, I I just wanted you to be able to speak um on the discussion of East Milton. The zoning RFP, if there was anything that you wanted to get in tonight on that.
Um, no- no- nothing dramatic, except to say that um Josh provided a um an updated um kind of draft RFP that included some of the changes that we talked about the last time we discussed this. Um there are a couple additions, I think the the sort of the main gist of of the conversation was kind of you know, pointing towards the vision statement as a kind of broad statement rather than the specific vision plan in the Barrett Report. Um and I think we we also, I I, you know, I I kind of made a, an executive decision that I I think you'll agree with that um I I I took away the sort of multiple options. I I just kind of wrote in, you know, look at the vision statement, look at the Barrett Report, look at the sort of diversity of 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 opinions and viewpoints that kind of went into that, look at all the other documents and and come up with a draft opening, so that there's no confusion about forty R or empty communities or anything like that. Um you know, to to again, you know, give the consultant the opportunity to kind of spread their wings a little bit and and give the board something to chew on. Um so if you, and and I I, you can see that in red line, if you kind of open up the OneDrive and then actually download the document, the red line changes don't show up in the browser. Um so you can take a look at that, just to see that all of those um changes correspond to what you're talking about. And then, um, I did ask Josh to kind of include, um, we had included kind of a draft timeline in our application for the grant, so um he included a grand chart with a kind of a broad timeline. Um you know, for what we had to process, but he doesn't have dates attached to it, because it all kind of depends on a kind of notice to proceed. But it does have, you know, first month we do this, the next three months we do that. Um and so that's at the bottom of that document, that was a request that I think she wanted made. Um so, that's all in there, um, you know, you guys can take a look at that. The the next thing that I kind of want to do is, um and we didn't really have an opportunity to do this, I was, I was out last week. But I want to, I want to talk about procurement options, what other types of boilerplate, for lack of a better term, need to go into something like this, especially as it relates to, you know, whether we want to have an interview or anything like that, or selection criteria, or we want to do it straight up, you know, with a kind of a low bid type process. Uh so we'll get his advice on that.
Right.
If I, if I um, I'd just like to comment, Tim, I think um the work that you and Josh did on this is is really good. I uh I think it's, it's um, it's really well written, and I I think it creates a mechanism where there'll be a lot of what you had said you wanted, which was, and we felt we all needed, which was engagement of the residents and input. Um you know, and and I think it opened it up, um what you've done here is open it up for the consultant to to, you know, um, you know, I have an opportunity to provide opinion. Um there's only one section, and it was in Ta- in Task Two, where it reads preparation of drafts, zoning language, and other regulations. Um that first item, uh A, it reads draft dimensional use and other regulations that generally implement the vision statement in the Barrett Report. That's probably the only place where I've read, you know, maybe something with such emphasis that says dimensional use and other regulations that generally implement the vision statement in the Barrett Report. In that area, that to me feels like we're telling them, you know, to implement the Barrett Report. If that's, if that's what we're trying to do, uh that's what that statement, I think, is directing them. And uh outside of that particular statement, I do think that they've been told to reference the Barrett Report. That statement, to me, tells them to implement it. So I don't know if other members of the board read it the way I read it, but um I I, if you haven't had a chance to read it, I, we we should probably talk about it when everybody has.
Yeah, Sean, so I I I think um in in that regard, um you know, so on the, on the, on the one portion, you know, dimensional use and other regulations, that kind of is just, any, any, any type of regulation to do, to, um, we want to keep that broad. And then I I think that, you know, the the vision statement, I think, is is A was deliberately written to be expansive. Um that was, that was a a key thing during, during the sort of the the East Milton Warden Group process, where that vision statement really encompasses broad statements and broad goals. And honestly, if it's one thing that I think that there was consensus on during that process, it's it's the vision statement. Um you know, because again, I think it, you know, there's, we can, we can, we can point to things. I don't think there's a lot in there that is objectionable. Um I think, I think we can all kind of look at that and say like, yeah, this, this captures kind of a broad and positive affirmative vision for. So, you know, I think that's a kind of a move to to really move that process forward, and views will be learned in that process without shackling the consultant to things that maybe will open up, you know, debates that we may not want to really get anymore, so.
Okay, yeah, as I said, Tim, I I thought it was great work, really, that that was um, I think the way this is written, I think, gonna meet everybody's expectations.
Thank you.
Tim, are you, or Meredith, are you looking for a vote of support on the um content here?
So, so Meredith, before Meredith chimes in, one one thing that I would say is um if, if anyone has comments on this language or or wants to sort of, I I I I'd like to prepare a kind of final draft for the board, um and then we can get, we can be in a position then to to sort of put something out on the street. Um so, I don't, as 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 sort of the co-writer of this with Josh, I don't need a vote right now. Um I need kind of either general advice or guidance or specific edits or whatever. Then we'll get a a final draft that is kind of ready for, you know, for prime time, at which point I would, I would want, you know, a vote, um so that we can get it out and disseminate it to, we need to disseminate it to.
Yeah, so that was my question, are you looking for us to go line by line? I went line by line, um with my own red line. Um so do you want, are we doing that tonight, or should we just um send it over to you, or how do you want to go through it?
So, if you're, if you're a show, I would be extremely happy to take uh written comments or written edits and incorporate them into a draft and and send it out to the board for further discussion.
That would be great. Maggie, could you do that? Could you send sort of your um comments, red lines? And then Sean, you know, looking to tweak that one, that one line you referenced on the Barrett Report? Does that sound good, Tim? That's, I think we can get you those, it's, it really is, you know, it's, for the most part, I think it's really, really good, so.
Yeah, that that that'll work for me, and and like I said, we'll kind of clean it up and include the sort of the the specific textbook different language that we need, um so you guys can have something to finalize the vote on.
Thank you so much, that sounds great. Okay, um with that, I would like to, um, oh, I've just a real quick thing. That um Jay Fundling, just so for everyone to know, um has created a podcast uh feed for audio for town meetings. So you can now listen, if you would like, to meetings on podcasts instead of watching Milton Access TV. Um you can find it on Milton Mass Public Meetings, um on Apple, Spotify, or or um Pocket Costs. And soon, we'll be on Google, so he just wanted me to pass that on. And I did get an email from a resident um regarding our um possibly creating a, a, and I think this is actually a great idea. Um an article on on light pollution and prohibiting um residents who may be using um extremely bright lights in their house. Um there is um a situation at Turner's Pond, um which is an ongoing issue. And I, and you know, it could be, it could be anywhere in town, though. So um just doing something where we address um maybe a limiting um ra- around light pollution that we'd be thinking about that um for future town meeting, possible article. So we can put that on a later agenda, um and with that, a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait, before you go, I just have a question about um these forty B comments. So, um, you know, I've been trying to get get caught up to speed.
Yes, Maggie, sorry.
And and um, so I know Tim sent um a letter with our comments um to to the ZBA for both the Brush Hill and Amor Road. Um but I, but personally, I kind of felt like I dropped the ball on my comments. That was um right when I was um being thrown away on vacation, and I feel really bad um for not giving Tim my comments. I um, I I know we're volunteers and, um, but I really take our responsibility to our residents really seriously, and um, because I know these projects will forever impact and change not just our town, but most importantly, um the people living next to these projects. And um, and I just feel bad that I, I didn't give it my best to um provide comments. So I know the changes are happening, and I watched the Amor Road um discussion last night. And is there time for us to give more um comments um on the redrafts? Or is it kind of over? And in the future, um, I'm wondering if, um, you know, before Tim sends out the comments, do we have a chance as a board to kind of discuss the comments and review them and make sure they accurately reflect um what we're feeling? And making sure that our message is kind of a strong message and that we really do want the ZBA to take our comments seriously. So I just, you know, feel badly that I kind of dropped the ball on it. But I kind of want to help make up for it. So I'd like to be able to submit comments. And then secondly, I'm wondering if we're watching these ZBA meetings and it's open to public comment. Are we allowed to make comments on it? You know, I know probably just as residents, we probably could. But I'm not sure if it's appropriate to, you know, state that we're on the planning board when our comments are our individual comments and not from the board.
I think you just mentioned that you're not representing a full, that the board hasn't had that discussion or a vote on it. But that you are offering your comments. We, I think we've, and I remember on 582 Blue Hill Lab, the board authorized, I think it was Denny or Denny and Meredith to speak on the board's behalf because we had discussed it. So it depends if there's, you know, if we had a discussion.
Because I feel like when we discussed it, we discussed all three of them at the same time and we were kind of back and forth bouncing from one project to another. And they each have their own issues and challenges. And I think they, they each warrant maybe a full discussion by the board.
We did issue comment letters earlier in the process. And I, I imagine that the design hasn't changed so much that the comments wouldn't still be valid. You know, what we did on those other 40Bs was we wrote initial set of comments when the, at the project eligibility stage. And then at the, once they got their eligibility letter and they submitted design, we issued another comment letter related to those. And then we had discussions at our meetings. And we had people authorized to speak at the meetings, just so you, just for background. But there were so many of the 40Bs, it was hard to fit all of them onto our agenda, you know, with other things. But I know that Kathleen did one round of letters, drafted them. We discussed them line by line in our meetings. And I did one round of letters that we discussed line by line at meetings. So anyway, background.
So just to hit home, like, so I actually have to jump, but I just wanted to say, you'd make, what, just agreeing with what Cheryl said. Normally if somebody, I mean, like if I wanted to go to any meeting and as a citizen, weigh in, I would normally just say, you know, I'm a town meeting member, I'm on the planning board, but I'm not speaking here on behalf of. But 100% agree with Cheryl. If you do want to represent and weigh in, then typically what we do is, or at least what I've seen in, in, in any committee that I've been on or board, it's that we talk about what you're going to talk about and then we vote on that. And it's just that, you know what I mean? So it's, you know, it's kind of like, you know, I think we have welcomed folks go and speaking on our behalf. But I think there's usually a long conversation beforehand on just exactly what's going to be represented because the reality is the votes, a lot of times are not 100% like, yes, everybody is in agreement with that. So some people might say, well, still clear, still steer clear of this comment, but I'm 100% on board with everything else. Those types of conversations usually take place.
Okay, thank you.
So, Tim, is that okay if we still give, continue to give you comments on those?
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely fine. I mean, you know, all of those, all of those projects have at least one more hearing, if not two more hearings. So there's, there's an opportunity for additional written comments. And also, you know, if you want to come to the hearings, they're on Wednesdays. There's an opportunity for oral commentary as well. I think it's, you know, Maggie, I think, you know, it's relevant that you're a member of the planning board. I wouldn't hesitate to say that, but also, you know, the board, you know, has, has kind of discussed this, the comments, but you've got your own kind of additional ones. You're, you're well within your rights to go and testify to those things. That's totally fine.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right. If there is not anything else, I'd like to make a, have a motion to adjourn this evening.
I'll make that motion, motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Oh, happily seconded.
Great, okay, roll call. Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Rich? He already left. Maggie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good evening.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, guys.